Make some tweaks to the.
Mike Sirum.
Make sure.
You ready?
Okay, let me look at it.
But if not, then.
Yeah. Yep. That'd be good.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Kay.
Here.
Councilmember Strowman.
Here.
Councilmember Engel.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Walker.
Here.
Mayor Hagan, excused.
All right, we'll continue with presentations. City Manager.
Okay, so we do have a recognition that we would like to do that is not on the agenda, and so I will turn it over to Chief for both that recognition as well as the item number one, the swearing in.
So, on June 8th, I was contacted by a resident, Gabriela Vargas, regarding a custody issue where her daughter was taken out of state without her permission. Based on the information provided, there appeared to be a potential custody order violation but was outside of the Escalon Police Department jurisdiction. Modesto PD informed Ms. Vargas that they would not take a report for the incident, at which time I indicated the Escalon Police Department would take a report and attempt to determine trip details. Officer Raymond, who handled the call, went above and beyond expectations and facilitated the safe and immediate return of the child. I was subsequently contacted by Ms. Vargas, who expressed her great gratitude and thought that Officer Raymond should be recognized for her great work, and I can't agree more.
Last week, my seven-year-old daughter, Brooklyn, was abducted by her father and taken across multiple state lines. After failed attempts to try to get her back, I reached out to the one person I knew that could help me, Chief Hargraves, and he immediately dispatched an officer to assist me. Officer Raymond, I want to publicly thank you for being the reason my daughter stands beside me today. When she was taken, my world stopped. I was terrified. From the moment you got involved, I knew she wasn't just another call or a case for you. You made my daughter your priority. You displayed a skill set that is not taught in the academy or FTO training. You showed genuine concern, support, and empathy in my most vulnerable time. It is because of you that my daughter was returned home safely. You are everything a great officer should be: brave, committed, and deeply human. I will never forget what you have done for us. With all my gratitude, thank you for giving us our family back.
Yep. As a commendation, I'll email you a copy.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm grateful that I had this case because it really taught me a lot. But I would be doing an injustice if I didn't recognize Officer Maripau as well because he guided me throughout the whole process. He has a lot of experience, as you'll find out soon enough. But I'm glad we got her back, and thank you guys so much for having me up here.
And I just want to say thank you. Thank you to Officer Raymond for your great police work and for protecting our citizens and committing to our community. So, thank you.
So, next, we have Officer Maripau. Officer Maripau has had a long career in law enforcement, working five years at the Department of Corrections and 22 years at the Alameda County Sheriff's Department. During his time at the Alameda County Sheriff's Department, he's performed a plethora of assignments, some of which include gangs, special operations, EOD and explosives, K-9, dive team, investigations, and FTO. Officer Maripau has also worked 10 years as a sergeant and three years as a lieutenant before retiring. Since starting with the Escalon Police Department on April 27th, he completed the FTO program in record time and is now cleared to work as a solo patrol officer. His knowledge and experience has already proven beneficial in multiple incidents, including the one you've just heard about, a burglar at Vineyard Pharmacy, and a domestic violence call that had turned into a barricaded suspect. I am proud to welcome Officer Maripau to the Escalon Police Department family, and he will be having his badge pinned on by his mother Sally with the assistance of his wife, Lizette. Hi, state your name.
Hi, Eric Maripau.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will.
Support and defend.
Support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well and faithfully.
And that I will and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Good point.
I just have a short speech for all of you. Mayor, members of the City Council, and Chief Hargraves, and the dedicated men and women of the Escalon Police Department, it is truly an honor to stand before you as I begin a new chapter in a lifelong commitment to public safety. I retired as a lieutenant from the Alameda County Sheriff's Office. This was after 27 years of law enforcement service. This is a career marked by meaningful work, very tough decisions, and a deep sense of purpose. This evening, I'm humbled to join the Escalon Police Department and continue that service in a community that reflects the same values I've always stood for in this honorable profession, which is courage, honor, integrity, and trust. Throughout my career, I've led tactical operations, supervised complex investigations, and I mentored future law enforcement leaders. But the most important lesson that I've learned is it's the trust and the cornerstone of our honorable profession: the trust the people we serve and the trust within our own ranks. The city of Escalon may be small in size, but it shows strength in principle, and I look forward to serving alongside an agency that honors those principles every day. And to Chief Hargraves, and to every officer here, I see the hard work you do, and I deeply respect it. I understand the missed holidays, the long shifts, the silent sacrifices this calling demands. I stand ready to serve you and guided by the same values that instilled in me: courage, honor, integrity, and trust. This journey hasn't been mine alone. This journey's been joined with my wife of 25 years, Lizette. Thank you for your unwavering support, for your strength through the challenges, and for both being the heart and the backbone of our family. And to my children, Caesar and Jocelyn, you've been my inspiration. Your questions, your pride, your understanding have always reminded me the deeper meaning behind my badge. And of course, to my 94-year-old mother, Sally, who's seated here today, my sister Rochelle, my brother Dwayne, you've always witnessed every step of this path. With your blessings, I step into the next chapter renewed and ready. As I return to service, I do so with a full heart and a clear purpose, and this is to give my best not only to the agency but to the citizens of Escalon. I will serve with not just experience but with humility and with compassion and a commitment to do what's right, especially when no one's watching. So, thank you for the opportunity. I'm very proud to be here, and I'm ready to serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Officer Maripau. I am honored to be here today to welcome you to the team, and thank you so much for your commitment to help protect our community. Thank you.
Welcome.
Just like to welcome you, sir. Thank you very much for joining us.
I guess I would just like to say to Officer Raymond, you know, Officer Maripau kind of touched on it, but to be a police officer takes a lot of courage, especially when no one is watching. And I feel like Officer Raymond treated this case as her own and really reunited a family. And I can't speak for the other four, but I know them well enough to know that family has to be our number-one priority. And so, she took off, but Officer Raymond, thank you for your bravery, your courage, your commitment to restoring one of our residents' family. That being said, Officer Maripau, welcome to the family. It's good to have you onboard. Officer Palmino's kind of hanging out there back in the corner because now he's got some competition. So, Sergeant Zambrana, you can't hide. I see you back there. And Officer Jamal, to all of the Escalon PD, we appreciate all of your hard work, and it's really glad to have you onboard. I don't know where you're going to go diving, maybe in a swimming pool. So, we don't have a lot of dive spots, and I don't know the last time Chief got his riot gear on to go on a call here within the city of Escalon. So, we're not like the city of action, but we care and appreciate you coming onboard, and welcome to the family.
We'll move on with presentations, and that would be to conduct interviews of the Planning Commission applicants, and if council agrees, make an appointment for the three expiring terms on the Planning Commission.
Okay, and we're just getting word that maybe we don't have video on YouTube, and we are looking at that. Sounds like we have audio.
We want to pause.
Yeah, we'll let everyone. one is for a new Economic Development Committee. For the Planning Commission, item number two, we do have three expiring terms. It has been council policy, city policy, to interview, go out for application process, and then interview for expiring terms. We do have five applicants who have applied, five people who have applied, for the three expiring terms. So, with that, I will turn it over to the council to conduct interviews, as we have normally done it. Generally, each council member will ask about one question. We will make them consistent questions for each of the applicants, so it is fair and transparent process. And each of the applications are in your agenda packet, and so Chair, you can call them up at your discretion, but mostly it's been in the order that they are in the packet.
Mr. French, may I make a public statement?
Sure.
So, I know that the council is aware of this. I would like the public to know that I was contacted earlier today by Mr. Oblacion, who is one of the applicants, to inform me that he was not able to attend tonight's meeting because he is attending to a very important family matter this evening, but he asked me to share that into the record.
Thank you, council member. I will also state Steve Castellanos, who is applying for the Planning Commission, is not able to attend today because he is supporting a family member in the hospital, but that he was going to try to call in for the interviews.
Is he currently online?
We do not see him.
Are we getting technical issues resolved, or would you like me to move on?
So, why don't we take just a second to restart the YouTube? It shouldn't take too long, and we'll start it again.
No.
No light on or anything?
Someone move at the daisies.
Video is on?
It was just... We don't see it, so that doesn't matter.
It's up. You, I think. How do you say it?
Looks like all these are lit up.
All right, everyone, hold your breath. I think we're up.
I'm not holding in my breath this entire meeting.
I'm holding it all day.
All right. Good.
It's up. All right.
So, just to reset, yes, we have two Planning Commission applicants who are not here. One is not able to participate via phone, and one was going to try. We do not see him, Steve Castellanos. We do not see him on yet, so council can do with that what they want.
So, up here with council, just a quick check that we feel that it's appropriate to hold interviews today with their being two absent from Planning Commission, but then also with four of us and one commissioner, the mayor, also absent. Can we have that as a quick discussion?
Will it be okay to go ahead and move forward? And if we get to an impasse, then we can kick it to the next meeting.
Are we... Yeah, I'm in a grains. Are we talking about both or just one?
Either. I mean, we're talking specifically about planning now, but we can also talk about EDC right now as well.
I'll hold my comments for EDC until we resolve.
Planning.
Planning.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and conduct interviews for the Planning Commission, and we'll go in the order in which we have them here, which would be Rita Long. So, Rita Long is present today. And the city manager said we'll go ahead and be asking questions to each candidate. It will be the same question. If you'd like, you can introduce yourself.
Yeah, hi. Nice to meet you. My name is Rita Long. Legally, it's Margaret Long, but we go by Rita for obvious reasons. But I am a resident of Escalon since 2021. I was actually born in Egypt, came here when I was four years old into America, lived in LA for a little bit, and then grew up in Modesto. My husband and I both work for the sheriff's office, so when we first got married, we had an apartment in Ripon, and we wanted to find a city that met our values, somewhere that we wanted to raise a family in, and Escalon checked all those boxes. And so, we moved here. We've been here, obviously, since 2021. We bought a home. I had my first child in October last year, and even more of a reason why I wanted to get involved, because I believe in being involved. I've just always been involved in student council leadership and college and everything that I've been involved with. I've done the extra steps on doing events or whatever it was, and so I felt like it was only appropriate to do the same for the city that I love and live in, and so here we are.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, and commissioners, we'll go ahead and start on... Let's go with Commissioner Engel. Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Sorry, council.
Hi, thanks for applying.
Yeah, absolutely.
The question that I have for you is, if an applicant presents a plan that you think is subpar or you think is not compatible for the location, but it technically meets the zoning code and general plan policies, what would you do?
I think that's why we have committee, right? So, it's not just what I want to do, it's what the committee thinks. And so, I mean, you... So, just to give background, I'm a public information officer for the sheriff's office, so we deal with a lot of things that tend to... can be subjective, but it falls down to objectivity, right? And so, I say that because even if it meets those criterias, what's for the greater good? And so, and part of the planning, and this is why it's a four-year term, is to think four years on... And specifically here, the planning is up until 2035, so we're thinking 10 years, right? And so, it's important to not only meet the criteria, like you stated, but also think of the overall betterment. And so, if we could propose something else that could be also good for the citizen and also the city. So, I think it's important to propose cons and then discuss as a team.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Strowman.
First of all, welcome to Escalon, Rita.
Thank you. It's a pleasure being here.
You chose a wonderful place to raise your family. It's kind of like the Hotel California, though, because once you can get here, you can never leave, so just be forewarned.
Yes.
And thank you for applying to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Before I came on council, I was a planning commissioner. Learned a lot, that's for sure. My question is, how would you respond to lobbying from a developer or an agent?
You know, obviously, they have to do it the legal way, right? So, there's no side conversations and all that. And I'll be honest, I've never... I've been on different committees. On the Sheriff's Foundation, I was on the board on the University Student Union in college, but I've never done anything like this. So, full transparency, that's something that I would lean on. A policy book, if there's a policy book, I'd like to read it, so I know how that works, and then all my team. And so, if they're lobbying, they do it in Washington, so I'm assuming there's some legality behind it, but hearing them out and just making sure that we go due process. So, I'd love not, to be honest, wasn't... Did not expect this type of interview panel. I thought it was going to be, you know, sit-down. I have copies of my resume with me, but one thing, I love transparency. So, I think that the transparency behind this, where anybody could go on YouTube and watch this later on, I think that's great. And so, to that, I think transparency would be kind of what I would fall back on, whatever that conversation was, is make sure that it's public, it's on record, and again, we just make the right decision, not only for that citizen but also the city of Escalon.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Kay?
I really appreciate you applying, especially with such a short time in the city and you wanting to get involved. That tells me that you're planning on planting roots, and I think that's awesome.
Thank you.
My question for you is, based on the importance of the Planning Commission decisions, preparation and attendance is extremely important. The Planning Commission meets once a month, and can at times require a significant amount of material review. Are you prepared to make the commitment to spend the amount of time required to attend regular meetings? Do you cite visits and study the packet material?
Absolutely. I had to write a memo to be able to apply for this, so the sheriff saw it, so he knows that I'm fully committed. But, and my husband's fully supportive as well, and we have a great... We have a great community that we lean on, and so, absolutely. I love this, and I love... And that's why I wanted to join this, is because I want to learn more about Escalon, right? It's not just peaches and cream. So, I want to learn more about it, and I feel like this is a great opportunity to do so.
Awesome.
Thank you. And finally, in your view, what are the keys to maintaining a strong, vibrant community, and how can the Planning Commission support this goal?
So, one of the reasons why we moved to Escalon is the same reason why we came to America, right? The American... I don't want to say, yes, American dream, but what America is, the family tradition, the values, and that's what you get in Escalon, and it's so great. So, when we first moved in, we had like a bongo night with our neighbors, which you don't see in bigger cities, right? We used to go to Snap Fitness all the time, and we had this like 5:00 AM crew that would say hi to each other, and they would know each other, and they would, "Oh, you haven't been here? Oh, you went on vacation? How was vacation?" That's what Escalon is, right? In our community, where I take my dog and I walk, everyone knows. Everyone who knows who my dog is, and everyone knows who I am, and that's what I love about Escalon, and I want to maintain that. But I think there's room for growth, and when I say growth, I don't mean growth in "let's build more houses, let's expand in that way," but I think there's growth in what we already have, just enhancing it, right? Why don't we have a community garden? Why don't we have... The restaurants that we have here, why don't we support it and fuel it, where you're actually getting people from other cities to come, right? So, you have... And I don't know if this is like taboo or not, but not to compare to other cities, but you see that happening in other cities, so you know it's possible. Why don't we have Cougar Pride everywhere that you go, right? Every restaurant that you have, you have a little flag or a little, you know, little hint of purple and gold, just to showcase that our pride is here. So, I think it's there, but we just got to enhance it. We just... And like I said, I did leadership growing up, and I was part of the entourage and all that stuff, and was even the mascot for a little bit. So, I love that. I want people to be... Have pride in who we are, in who Escalon is and what they stand for, and just give them something to do. So, Friday night, why don't we have a restaurant that has a karaoke night? So, you're, again, you're staying in. So you're, again, you're staying in, not just Valley Inn, right? Valley Inn is great, but I just feel like there's so much potential. You see, you see Main Street, and it's unfortunate, you have these like vacant spots, right? Where this could be the hub where people come in, and you know it's safe, right? If Stockton could have a downtown that people feel comfortable walking around, Escalon could totally do it and do it so much better. And so, that's what I believe in. I feel like, you know, you don't, it's not that traditional, let's build more houses, like you see it with Oakdale, right? Oakdale's growing so fast, and I think it's losing its small-town feel, right? And, and, and to that point, we're also in a hub of commutes, right? So wherever you are, you have to drive through Escalon, we'll make them stop and spend their money here, right? And get the tax revenue and all that stuff without compromising what Escalon is. And that's my answer to that.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, and thank you for going first.
Yeah.
This is Mayor Protem. Actually, I, Councilmember Kay said one question, but I just thought of one more question that I would like.
I knew you would.
I can't come with a plethora, but this question is very important to me, and I think it's very important to the community. So, let's say you're appointed to the Planning Commission. How would you deal with a conflict if a decision was to be made that was a conflict between local control and local ordinances versus state law, when you know that the state law completely changes the foundations and the fabric that the city of Escalon was built on?
So, one thing I love about Escalon, and I tell people that, you kind of forget that you're in California, right? And we moved here in the peak of COVID, and so there, this robs people the wrong way, I'm just going to put myself out here, because that's just who I am, and I feel like you're all about transparency, but you didn't have to walk around with a mask and tiptoe around people, right? Like there were just this, and then you saw these little, the picket signs that said, you know, Escalon against mandates, because your freedoms matter. And so, that, yes, and I deal with this with the sheriff, right? Because our sheriff is all about, you know, enforcing law, and California is not about that, right? And so we deal with that on a daily, but as long as you're not doing anything illegal, right, and that's, you have to uphold the law at the end of the day, I think you, you speak to the residents and the people, right? You're here to represent the people, and if that's what the people want, then that's what the people get. As long as you're not breaking laws, it's not unethical or unmoral, that's all that matters. And so, like I said, that could be a very controversial statement, but I feel like that's what makes Escalon Escalon, right? That's, that's why we moved here, that's why we're going to raise a family here. So hopefully that answers your question?
It does, thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
No more.
It was a good question.
Thank you.
Slight reprieve.
And do you guys all have a resume, if not, I have copies?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe they all have it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And we'll go ahead and go in the same order down the line here. So the next up is Barbara Willis. Welcome up, Barbara. Would you like a moment to introduce yourself?
My name is Barbara Willis. I've been a planning commissioner for 32 years. I've been in Escalon since 1987. Some of what Rita said, we, we lived here, we worked out of town, but I wanted to give back to the community, so that's why I originally got on the Planning Commission. When I got my master's degree, some of my coursework was in urban planning, and I used that when I started with the Planning Commission, applied some of what I was learning. That's all.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And so we'll go ahead and ask you a series of questions, and we'll start with Counselor Engel.
Hi, Barbara, nice to see you again, and thank you for all of your years of service on the Planning Commission. So the same question. If an applicant presents a plan that you think is subpar, or you think is not compatible for a location, but it technically meets the zoning code and general plan policies, what would you do?
As a matter of fact, we just had a situation like that. The applicant wanted to put in a residential slash commercial building down on Highway 120, Jackson Avenue, and it was deemed not to be the best use for that corner. There were neighbors who didn't like it, there were other, not necessarily code violations, but they dotted the i's and crossed the t's, but it wasn't the best set, situation for that corner. So they were encouraged to go back and redo their plan, come back with a little, a change, or to take it to city council, because it was shot down by the Planning Commission. So there are different avenues. If it's not a good fit, you can try different avenues to try and either redo it or, or resubmit it and, and take your chances.
Thank you.
Counselor Strowman.
Hi, Barb. Thank you for all of your years of service on the Planning Commission. Thank you for helping mentor me when I was a planning commissioner. Now I'm sitting up here. But I appreciate the years of service that both you and Dave have provided the community. When I think of Escalon, I think of Dave and Barb Willis, so appreciate everything you guys have done for the community. My question is, how would you respond to lobbying from a developer or an agent on a particular project?
I was trying to think back to when it might have happened. There were offers to buy lunch or dinner, and then maybe an applicant who would say, you can't shoot me down, this is the best thing that could have happened to Escalon. You learn to realize that it's not something you could give into. You're, you're committed to your community, the residents in that community, the municipal code, you just don't succumb.
Thank you.
Counselor Kay?
Hey, Barbara. Nice to meet you. I've watched you on YouTube for many years. Appreciate all of your years of service. My, my question almost seems a little silly to ask someone who has, who has spent this amount of time on our Planning Commission, but I'm supposed to ask the same question of everyone. Based upon the importance of the Planning Commission decisions, preparation and attendance is extremely important. The Planning Commission meets once a month, and can at times require a significant amount of material review. Are you prepared to make the commitment to spend the amount of time required to attend regular meetings, do site visits, and study the packet material?
I am now, and I always have been. This afternoon, I was remembering times when city council and Planning Commission would take a bus trip to another community to see how they made their decisions, or how they dealt with a certain situation, and we haven't done that in a long time. And there were times when planning commissioners would go to workshops, Sacramento, Monterey. I, I made commitments then to devote the time, and I'd still be willing to do that now.
I appreciate you for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that insight. Appreciate that. That's been further than I remember, so I'd like to look a little bit more into that too. So my question, in your view, what are the keys to maintaining a strong, vibrant community, and how can the Planning Commission support this goal?
I see the role of a planning commissioner as more passive than a city council member. I, I know that we've got absentee landlords downtown. It's not our role to try and fill businesses downtown or anywhere, but if people were to come to us with an idea, with something we could vote on or make recommendations, either for or against, and I know the chamber has tried over the years to pull people off the highway to come and, and go to businesses here in town. There are different entities in the community that have goals to try and encourage business or, or whatnot, but as a planning commissioner, I can listen to my community, I can hear their concerns, I can make a decision, pro or con, on an issue. Beyond that, I hesitate to encourage somebody to do something if they end up coming to me to make a decision, and I have to shoot them down because it wasn't well thought out, or it wasn't appropriate for that particular site. So I don't, I don't put myself out there to, to lobby and to encourage other people to do things, maybe, maybe suggest, but not, not to step on toes of other agencies that might have those, those roles.
Thank you. And Counselor Strowman, did you have one more question?
I did. So, describe for us how you would deal with a conflict, if a conflict were to come before the Planning Commission. That is a direct conflict between local control and local ordinances in comparison with state laws and state mandates, that you know that changed the foundations and the fabric that the city of Escalon was built on.
I, I wonder if they would come to the Planning Commission, or if they would be met head-on at another level. I'm thinking of accessory dwelling units, things like this that the state has mandated, and we basically had no choice but to follow those state mandates. And there have been times when we've changed our municipal code to go along with what the state has mandated. And, and I imagine there's some wiggle room to, to, to make decisions, but, but yeah, the state over the city in a lot of cases.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, and so next, we'll welcome Roxanna Gonzalez up to the podium.
So my name is Roxanna Gonzalez. I am a lifelong resident of Escalon. I left for a few years for college and was crazy enough to move back from San Diego. Since then, I have mostly worked for, in real estate, in development, construction, even in environmental company for a little while. So I'm pretty versed with the, the process that the Planning Commission has to enforce and oversee, and I'm hoping just to help keep my city moving forward in a way that makes residents want to stay here, because I have no intention of moving anytime soon.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and ask you those questions, and we'll start with Counselor Engel. Okay?
All right. Hi, Roxanna, thank you for applying.
Thank you.
My question is the same as the others. If an applicant presents a plan that you think is subpar, or you think is not compatible for the location, but it technically meets the zoning code and general plan policies, what would you do?
So that's a tricky question, because if it technically meets zoning, there's not a whole lot of opportunity at the planning level to just shoot something down. You get into some legality issues if something on paper is, checks all the boxes, dots all the i's, crosses all the t's. Fortunately, there's a city council that has a little bit more wiggle room and a little more public opinion that they can consider, but if it meets the zoning requirement right now, as it currently stands, we don't have a whole lot of options, which honestly is part of the reason why I'm up here, because I do think that there are some possibilities for some ordinances and some elements of planning that could possibly be implemented, kind of formula-based type policies that would restrict certain types of businesses based on, say, population, for example. I know that there are some concerns among residents about smoke shops and dollar stores and things like that, and I do think for such a small town, you can enact ordinances that kind of limit the amount that go in.
Thank you.
Counselor Strowman.
Sure. Hi, Roxanna, thanks for applying. Appreciate you making the effort, but why would you move back to Escalon from San Diego?
I know, crazy, right? Because honestly, it's, it's the same thing that everybody talks about. It's, you know, whether you've lived here for a few years, or you've lived here for 40-some-odd years, not to date myself, there's relationships that are built that are just different. You can move to other places, and you may make some great friends, but a lot of times they're more out of convenience or association, whereas when you're home, these are people that have known you for as long as you can remember, and that's worth something, and it's definitely worth preserving.
All right, now I'm going to ask you my real question, if that's okay. How would you respond to lobbying from a developer or an agent on a particular project?
Well, I've been on that side of a project in Escalon, so I have worked for the Yates family, building the facility out on Brennan Road, that some people are excited about, some people are not very excited about. But, you know, there is a process that people need to go through. Obviously, if it's a resident, you need to make yourself available to hear their concerns. Sometimes people just want to be heard and feel like their opinions are validated, but at the end of the day, you obviously have to go by the book, and you have to make an informed decision that's in the best interest of the city as a whole, and that also is compliant with our general plan and ordinances.
Thank you.
Counselor Kay?
So you have three questions on this one.
No, I was just asking her about San Diego.
Hi, Roxanna, really appreciate you applying for this. I'm going to ask you the same question I've asked everyone else. Based upon the importance of Planning Commission decisions, preparation and attendance is extremely important. The Planning Commission meets once a month, and can at times require a significant amount of material review. Are you prepared to make the commitment to spend the amount of time required to attend regular meetings, do site visits, and study packet material?
Absolutely. That's actually kind of what my normal job is, is reviewing projects to bid for the construction company that I work for. So this is in my wheelhouse, and I'm pretty comfortable making that commitment, otherwise I wouldn't be up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roxanna, in your view, what are the keys to maintaining a strong, vibrant community, and how can the Planning Commission support this goal?
So when it comes to Escalon, you have two types of people. In my opinion, you have people that are pro very slow growth, and you have people who want no growth. So I think that Escalon needs to be strategic in our growth and encouraging a balance of good-paying jobs, services that are much needed, and some variety of places to shop and grab a meal. And then, of course, you know, as, as things expand, you do need to add housing, or you need to, to make housing available for seniors and things like that. I know that's been kind of a hot topic at the city council meetings for years. So I think we need to look at what the city wants, what the city needs, and then just approach it from a very balanced, strategic approach through our general plan, and hopefully encouraging relationships with businesses that we'd like to see come here, and posing a business-friendly attitude.
Thank you. And Counselor Strowman?
This is my second question.
Officially, second.
But let's say you're appointed to the Planning Commission, and there's a, a decision was brought before the Planning Commission that you knew that was a conflict between local control and our local ordinances against California state laws and mandates, which the California state laws and mandates changed the fabric and foundation that the city of Escalon was built on. How would you deal with that?
So this is really tricky, because it's happened already with the Section 8 housing. That was something that California mandates that the city was super against, which I understand, I wouldn't want apartments of any kind in my backyard. I think that the answer to that comes down to basically that we need to start trying to guide development and guide where those types of things go versus just reacting to applications. So you can develop buffer spaces, like if you did not want to allow multifamily near R1, which is basically your single-family residences, you could create spaces so that if there is something that you can't necessarily get rid of, just because the state mandates it, you can at the very least give residents a cushion, so they don't feel like it's just being forced down their back fence. So that's really, I think, all you can do at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out today.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have, has Castellanos, is he available?
Do not see him.
Do not see him.
Okay.
So Ms. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Before we get into deliberations, I would just like to state publicly that while Mr. Castellanos and Mr. Oblacion are not here, I don't feel that we can hold judgment against them for not attending. They are currently with their families, and I would just like to remind the council that this is the second time in as many months that Mr. Oblacion has applied to the Planning Commission, even though he's not here to speak for himself.
Okay, thank you. And then, so how do we go about this? Are we opening this up for comment?
Yeah, council deliberation now, usually a motion or a suggestion, and we will vote on each one as it comes.
So do we?
Do I open it up for, for comment from public at this point?
Yes.
May I do that? All right, so if there's anybody that would like to speak on the behalf of another candidate, come on up.
Oh, well, we're both in the senior category, too. Hello, good night, I mean hello, good morning, whatever. So I would just say that what I've heard is like fantastic, good luck with that decision. I'm glad it's you, not me. But there is a gentleman who isn't here, and I think it's the gentleman you mentioned. He did interview last time, so you do have that, and hopefully you can take that into consideration, too, because I think he had a lot to offer, as well as all these fine folks who have already spoken. Like I said, good luck with that.
Thanks, Sherry. Thanks, Sherry, appreciate you. Thanks for being a team player.
Well, I'm glad I'm not sitting up there. I'd like to speak in favor of Steve Castellanos. I've worked with him on the Planning Commission. I've known Steve for a long time. I think one of his biggest assets is he's a real estate appraiser. And as a real estate appraiser, you go to different cities, and you see what is going on. You see what's worked for that city. You also see what has not worked for that city, and you can't, that's experience that is invaluable. With those, that information, he makes good decisions. He has for quite a few years now, and I think he would continue to do so. And like I said, his qualifications as retired appraiser gives him a lot of experience.
Thank you.
Come speak tonight, but I'd like to advocate on behalf of Nick Obligacion. He's former police chief of the City of Manteca. He's volunteered a lot in Manteca. He's seen how other cities run. He's a great asset to our community. He's done a lot of things recently in our neighborhood that have helped us. I think he would be a really great asset to the City of Escalon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to council. Counselors, any discussion?
I'll go first. I personally believe that we would be doing a disservice to our community to have two long-term commissioners and, and not give them their seats back, given their qualifications, their time on, on the commission, and obviously the experience. That said, in my mind, there's kind of only one open position here. Really like Nick, and I think that he interviewed very well for us. Rita as well, I think that you did a fantastic job. You answered all the questions amazingly, so please don't, please don't let this hurt your feelings, but, but I feel that Roxanna definitely has the, the best qualifications to fill that third spot. So in my opinion, I think that those are the three that we should be filling those commission seats with.
Okay, would you like, do any other counselors want to weigh in?
Sure, I will. With all due respect, Mr. Kay, I respectfully disagree, only because the fact that I think Roxanna would be better suited for the Economic Development Commission that she's also applied for, that we'll be speaking to later on. I feel like your skill set is much more qualified for that position than on the Planning Commission. I think that, I mean, I, I served on the Planning Commission with Steve and Barb, and they were both mentors to me, and if there is one person that comes consistently that comes to meetings, plan, that plans and has notes everywhere, that's Barbara Willis. And Steve, like I said, was a mentor to me, and I, I think he did awesome. And candidly, this is a really hard decision, because I, I honestly, I think that Rita's skill set is a breath of fresh air and is kind of reflective to the City of Escalon. I mean, we, we recognize the traditions and the council members and mayors that stood before us, and if you look at the, I don't want to call, put us within an age group, but if you look at the current makeup of the council, we're all family, we all, we all have families, we all have a vested interest in our community, and I feel like Rita carries those same values. And she gets Escalon. She's only been here since 2021, and she gets it. And unless you've lived in Escalon, you don't get it. So with that, I will hold my nomination until further discussion.
Would you like to say anything on this?
I, I would. I'd actually like to ask Roxanna one additional question, if I may. So you, you have applied for both the Planning Commission and the Economic Development Committee?
It's kind of a trick, but yes.
So if you had to choose, right, where, where does your passion lie? Which, which of those two better fits your wheelhouse?
You know, that's, that's tough, because I think when you're applying for these committees or the commissions, you're kind of going in blind. You don't know who's applying. You see that there's three openings, and you're thinking, oh my gosh, that's a majority, and that could shape the future of our town. So if you care, you want to throw your hat in the ring and hopefully preserve it for your next generation of family, your neighbors, and the community that you care about. So in this instance, I applied for both because honestly, we do have a development that's going on out on Brennan, and I wasn't sure if anybody would perceive me applying for a Planning Commission as a conflict, even though we're, we're through that process. So my thought process was, well, if I'm not a good candidate for Planning Commission, then I still would be happy to help out. Seeing the applications for the Economic Committee, they're pretty amazing. I think a few people got cold feet seeing the format for tonight, which I hope that those people can be reached out to and encouraged to still participate, but I would actually prefer planning, seeing who has applied for the Economic Development Committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just briefly add to one of the comments there. We have been notified that two of the applicants for the Economic Development Committee have chosen not to participate tonight.
Are they pulling their applications?
Well, I think the way we have done this in the past is, it is via interview. Haven't had a chance to talk with them extensively, but did at least not want to participate in this format tonight, so we'll leave that for you all to deliberate on in this new committee formation.
I do have a nomination, if that's the case.
Do we have a motion or a nomination here?
I do.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Roxanna Gonzalez for Planning Commission.
Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
And then, do we have a motion or a nomination for the other two seats?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Nick Oblacion.
Do we have a second? No seconds, do we have another nomination?
I'd like to nominate Barbara Willis.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, welcome back Barbara. And then we'll need a third, do we have a third nomination?
I would be happy to nominate Mr. Castellanos.
Great, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, and we have a Planning Commission. Welcome Roxanna, and welcome back Barbara and Steve. So there we go, and I think Planning Commission's looking good, moving forward. Love to see our city moving in a great direction with some great insight and some great insight from people who have been here for a long time. If you have not made it on Planning Commission, I don't want that discouraged. We had some great nominees, or some great candidates today, and Rita, I hope you continue to participate in our community.
So before we continue, can I ask a question?
Just did.
Okay. So if the, if we have two candidates that have pulled out, and Roxanna applied and is now a Planning Commissioner, we're left with two candidates on a three-person committee, do we have to re-advertise for that third position? Or, I mean, can Roxanna do both? I don't know, I'm throwing it out there.
We just got a head shake, that's, that's too much for her.
I honestly, I mean, I would reach out to those people if possible. I know that we have people here, but I think it was a little intimidating.
Because, I mean, at, at the end of the day, we, we need to be fair for that open seat, and candidly, I can say, as I sit here, that I think Rita and Nick would be really good on the Economic Development Committee. So we can't just appoint Rita to that third position because she hasn't applied for that position, so how do we do that legally?
So you could appoint two of the three, and then you could just reach out and has to have a third interview when, or have it, have applicants for the third spot at a future meeting, that'd be the simplest and cleanest. Because it's a new committee, I'm not sure to the extent there's going to be overlap between the Planning and the EDC, and so I would prefer to have separate members on both bodies. And so I would just appoint the first two tonight, reach out, do recruitment for the third, and then we would interview for that third spot at a future meeting.
Thank you. Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
We're not, that's a continuation, it's a discussion up here. So we'll be moving on to presentation number three, which is to conduct interviews of the Economic Development Committee applicants, and if the council agrees, make an appointment for the three new seats on the Economic Development Committee.
And we do have a related item in number 15. If the council wanted to move their nomination of two council members up to just after this item, we could do those kind of back-to-back.
Okay, and that's, yeah, to select two Escalon City Council members to serve on the new Economic Development Committee, and I guess I'll do the same and just check with other counselors. Do we feel that it's appropriate to hold interviews for the counselors that should be sitting on that without all of us present?
I think that we're fine to go ahead and move forward the same way that we did, and like I said, if we can't come to a consensus on something, then take it to the next meeting where there's five of us.
Okay.
Well, and Ms. Mayor Protem, I mentioned that I would hold my comments till we got to the EDC committee. I will state them publicly now. Honestly, I think all five applicants would do amazing on the Economic Development Committee. And so when we did the formation of the Economic Development Committee, what I was going, I mentioned bumping that up to five members, and ultimately, the council determined three members, but looking at the resumes of the five applicants, I felt like all five could represent the, us on the Economic Development Committee. But it's a moot point now because to have withdrawn their applications, so that's the statement that I was going to make.
So just a clarification, they just didn't want to participate in this interview process. Have they formally withdrawn their applications?
We're reacting to this in real time. I've not had a chance to go back and, and ask them what their status is. I think we can, depending on what happens tonight, loop back, whether we re-advertise or talk to them directly, I think we have some options to figure out where they stand in terms of the overall process.
So we'll go ahead and hold interviews for the Economic Development Committee, and it will be held in a similar way to the Planning Committee, or Planning Commission, so we'll go ahead and call you up. You'll introduce yourself, and we'll have a couple of questions here for you to all answer. So we'll go ahead and start with Zach Hogan, come on up.
Good evening.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah. Zach Hogan, I've been born and raised at Escalon. My family's been here over eighty years. We have a, our business has been here over eighty years as well, so the City of Escalon is very near and dear to my heart, and my wife is born and raised here as well. We raised, we're Van Allen Vikings and all that good stuff, and just love everything about this town and want to be part of, somehow, I live in the county, so this is a way for me to somehow participate and give back, and seeing as I spend a lot of time in this place, probably more than most people, is they don't work here, so, yeah.
Great, well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Engel, did you want to have, start us off?
Sure, sure, sure. Hi Zach, thanks for applying, appreciate the effort there. So my question to you is, what are your initial ideas for supporting economic development in Escalon?
My initial idea is it would be figuring, figuring out a way to, you know, work with the city and, you know, Planning Commission, City Council, staff, to, to figure out ways that we can grow, bring tax base here, and still maintain what makes Escalon Escalon, right? Slow and steady growth, or, you know, and some people obviously is no growth, but I'd say, you know, we need a little bit of growth. There's, going back to some of the statements earlier about state ordinances and different things like that, I mean, there's, there, you know, what, what got us here won't get us there. So we need to be able to adapt and, you know, all work together to figure out something that, to figure out, you know, problems to, solutions to problems that arise in front of us, and, you know, figure out what's, what's best for, for the city and its citizens.
Thanks.
Counselor Stroman?
Sure. Thanks for applying, Zach.
Appreciate it.
You carry a pretty big stick, and I'm really glad to see you get, getting more involved in the community on a public front. I know you do a lot of things behind the scenes, but thank you, very much appreciated. This is a toughie, but in this role, you may have to weigh the interests of a property and business owner, the general community, and the potential economic or social benefits of a certain policy. How do you, in a public role, evaluate public testimony only from? How do you, in a public role, evaluate public testimony only from those opposed to the policy?
Repeat that?
Sure. I know it's a toughie, I wouldn't know how to answer it, honestly. In this role, you may have to weigh the interests of a property and business owner, the general community, and the potential economic or social benefits of a certain policy. How do you, in a public role, evaluate public testimony only from those opposed to the policy?
From those opposed to the policy?
So, I think what the question is getting at, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what it's getting at is, so, as an Economic Development Committee member, you're going to be preparing policies that affect the economic, future economic of the city of Escolon. And you get a group of community members that say, "What the heck does Zach Hogan know? He doesn't know what he's talking about. You've been here for 80 years, your family's been here for 80 years, you do know what you're talking about." How do you evaluate all the negativity when putting together the policy?
Well, what I've learned in my 15 years or so of managing people is you never make everyone happy. And at the end of the day, you need to do what's best for the greater good. There's always going to be people that disagree, and, you know, taking that, listening to it, there's sometimes, there's things you learn from it. Sometimes, people have valid points that need to be brought to the table and really discussed and considered. So, you know, when you're doing that, like I said, it's, you know, it's about the greater good, about what's best for the city, what's best for the overall community, and figuring out a way to work with people who disagree, maybe educate them if they, if it's potentially something that they don't understand all the way, or maybe it's just something new. A lot of times, when people are obstinate to things that they don't understand, so, you know, sitting back, trying to help someone understand and educate them, a lot of times can ease minds.
Thank you.
Counselor Kay?
Zach, I want to thank you for not only applying, but in our age group, I'm pretty sure that I see you here more than anyone else. And I really do appreciate your involvement in the community, not just here, I see you around town, I see you serving on baseball fields and everything that you do that is not a requirement, that is volunteer stuff. And I really, really appreciate your involvement in our community, I wanted to thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
My question is, what do you see the economic development challenges and opportunities in the city's future, nearer future is?
Well, having solid tax base, right? I mean, what are the things that we can do to continue to sustain and keep the lifestyle that we all, you know, know and love here? And do it in a way that can keep us, you know, can keep that kind of bubble that, you know, that brought Rita here and, you know, and others. You know, so there's a lot of moving parts to that and a lot of difficulty because, you know, places that have, that would help us establish a tax revenue, want rooftops. Well, there's only so many rooftops that we're willing to give up as a community. And I obviously see, as everyone's seen with the development, proposed development over here, I mean, there's a lot of, lot of things, you know, going on with that. And I really don't have an opinion either way on that, but, and, you know, there's a lot of things that are out of the city's hands, you know? If people are upset about traffic and things like that, well, that's not up to us. But, I mean, the city can do the best it can to work within, you know, the confines of Caltrans, a railroad, you know, all these different things that are going on there. And it's just, it's not easy. So, but, you know, look forward to sitting down with a creative group of people to come up with, you know, ideas and solutions to problems. It's what I do every day, and I love it. So, you know, if we can sit down and have a fresh perspective, think about things from a different angle, and find ways to continue to sustain, you know, what the city needs to operate, you know, and provide all the services we need to provide, then, and, you know, keep that way of life, then that's all about it.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. So, Escolon as we know it today is partly the result of planning decisions made in the past. What would you point to as places where this has worked well in terms of economic development, and how about things that have not worked as well?
What has worked well in economic development? Well, I would say, I would go back to kind of some of the Planning Commission things as far as not well, dollar stores, things of that nature. Yeah, it is some tax revenue, but it's, you know, ultimately, it kind of goes back to, you know, are those things that we really need or want in this town? Yeah, I think there's a lot of, you know, commercial spaces and things like that that have been established over the years that have, whether it's from just how the city has grown, or the highway, or how we're able to attract people that have just kind of sat and left vacant and things like that, so that makes it kind of tough. Where the city has done well, where planning has done well, I don't know, I don't have an answer to that.
Thank you, it's a difficult question.
Yeah.
I am hard pressed to come up with many, so, yeah, no. Thank you so much, I appreciate your insight. Yep.
One more.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My heart just stopped a little bit.
Okay, so next, we'll move on, Jessica.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Hi, I'm Jessica Wiley. I have owned a business in Escolon since 2018. I also serve as the Vice President of the Escolon Chamber of Commerce. I've been married 15 years this year, and I have two children. A little bit about me.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and ask you some questions, and start with Counselor Engel.
Hi, Jessica.
Hi.
Thanks for applying, it's awesome. Okay, back on track. What are your initial ideas for supporting economic development in Escolon?
I think, looking at like how we, how businesses come in and what the licensing process looks like, I think that's an important thing that we need to look at. And like, maybe for small businesses, there being a different price point to allow some of that growth, because a lot of small businesses turn into brick and mortars when they have the opportunity to grow. So, I think that's one place where you could maybe look at some different things. I think also, just being open to new ideas. I think sometimes, we so badly don't want things to change, but change is inevitable, and we just want what we feel the community to be, like, and the way it feels to be, what we really love about Escolon.
Thank you.
Counselor Stroman?
Sure. Good evening, Ms. Wiley.
Hi.
Thank you for applying. Before I ask my question, just similar to what I shared with Zach, I really appreciate all of your hard work and dedication to the Escolon community. I mean, you're out there all the time. And so, I appreciate all of your hard work with the chamber, because you and the chamber are really working hard to encourage downtown. And as a council member, really appreciate that.
Thank you.
In this role, you may have to weigh the interests of a property and business owner, the general community, and the potential economic or social benefits of a certain policy. How do you, in a public role, evaluate public testimony only from those opposed to the policy?
So, I think you kind of have to take yourself out of it. Like, the way people are talking about you and your opinions is not what's the overall purpose of what we're doing. And you learn that a lot when you're on committees or in volunteer work, because not everybody's going to like you or like your ideas. So, I think that you just taking yourself out of it and just thinking about what's best for the city and the community as a whole is probably the way I would look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kay?
Jessica.
Hi.
Thank you for applying, and thank you for your service on the Chamber of Commerce. We definitely appreciate everything that you do for us. What do you see the economic development challenges and opportunities in the city's near future is?
I think, as a whole, we want to be successful and sustainable, so I think our challenges are just making sure that that happens. I think that when we are looking at new businesses being here, we want to make sure that they have a sustainable place in our economy, where they're, you know, supported and helped and moved along, which is a lot of the stuff we do with the chambers. We try and help, and a lot, we ask a lot of questions about what you think you would need from a chamber, or what you would think you would need from an Economic Development Committee. I think that's an important place to start, is asking questions and seeing where we could be of service.
Awesome.
Thank you. Escolon as we know it today is partly the result of decisions and planning decisions made in the past. What would you point to as places where this has worked well in terms of economic development, and where hasn't it worked well?
I mean, I, it's a tough question. I think that where we work well as a whole, as a city, is the community and the feeling that we have and all the things that we support. I think it's hard to pinpoint where things haven't worked and things have worked. For me specifically, because I came into the community in 2018, so before that, I don't have a lot of knowledge of things before. But I think that looking at history can help, so I would definitely be open to looking at all of those kinds of things, but I just, I'm not sure that I have the correct answer for that.
No problem.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Yeah. And again, it's a difficult question. Thank you.
Yes.
So, in the meantime, did any, either of the two candidates that did not want to come to the interviews show up or contact or show up online?
Are we to assume that the two candidates are the other two besides Ms. Gonzalez?
Correct.
Pretty smart there.
Okay, Counselors, is there any?
Frank, do we, do we give Ms. Gonzalez the opportunity to interview if she wants, or give her the opportunity, withdraw her application?
I think it's deemed withdrawn by virtue of the fact that she was appointed to the Planning Commission, so we can, we don't have to stand on formalities. What I would suggest, because you're going to pair this with the selection, the appointment of the two council members, what I would do is I would open up to public comment for anyone that has anything to comment on either the appointment of the residents, citizens, or the council members, and then you all can make nominations for both pieces after that.
Okay, great. So, at this point, we'll open it up to the community. If you have any comments on any of the nominees, now would be the time to do so. Come on up.
I was interested, apply. Do I go through the formality of when you guys reopen, and then I do a formal submission, correct?
I would have, I'll check with City Manager, that is what I am under the impression.
That's all.
Thank you. Okay.
And Rita, please do.
Anybody else? And anybody on the nominees up here? There will be two members that will be joining this committee. Okay, we'll bring it back to council.
So, yeah, I think that, I would like to state publicly that I would be interested in being one of the council member appointees to the committee. Similar to the last discussion, Ms. Gonzalez, I hope you weren't offended by my vote, I just feel that, I feel your expertise would be better served. I'm not allowed to get in back-and-forth conversation, but just wanted to let you know. Okay. So, as I stated, I would like to be considered as one of the council member appointees, but with that, I would like to make a motion to appoint Zach Hogan and Jessica Wiley to the Economic Development Committee, as well as re-advertise for that third position.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? All right. So, we have new members, thank you and welcome to Zach and Jessica, to our brand-new Economic Development Committee, so.
I'd like to nominate Andy Hagan for the council portion of the Economic Development Committee.
Do we have a second?
Is that something that he has voiced that he wanted to be part of?
Well, he needed to be here to be able to voice that.
I'll go ahead and voice that I also would like to be considered for a spot, so, as we're going forward.
So, Councilmember Engel, I don't necessarily disagree with the mayor's nomination. Honestly, I'm just going to throw it out there. When we did the city council appointees, Mayor Hagan is currently a member of five committees, one alternate. You are on a representative of four committees, one alternate. Councilmember Kay is on two committees, two alternates. And Councilmember Walker is two committees, one alternate. And I have one committee assignment, and I'm an alternate on one commission. So, that being said, I have nothing against the mayor, but feel like we should spread the love, and...
I'm not sure, was that a second?
Yeah, we need a second before we're going to get into discussion.
Keith?
No second, is there another nomination?
Before we move forward, I would also like to say that I would really like to be on this committee. Our economic development is something that I have been very focused on since being elected to this seat, and would absolutely love to serve on this. I would be happy to second your nomination of Andy, as long as I knew that he wanted to do so, but he is doing so much as it is. I don't quite feel right nominating him and voting for him without knowing that he actually wants to serve on it.
Sitting in this seat, am I able to make nominations?
Anyone, anyone, including the mayor or the chair, is allowed to make a motion or a nomination.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to add Sean Stroman to the Economic Development Committee.
Am I allowed to second my nomination?
Yes.
I'll second my nomination.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
We have one. And do I have another nomination?
Yep, I'll nominate Jeff Kay.
And do I have a second? I'll second that.
I'll third that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
There you go, welcome. Okay, great, moving on with presentations. Oh, and welcome to the brand-new Economic Committee. I'm excited to see how this moves forward in the city of Escolon and what we can do, okay? So, with presentations, we'll go ahead and have the Escolon Major Infrastructure Project Quarterly Update.
Thank you, Chair. Jaylen French will give the presentation as it's loading. I'll have it in front of me.
There, Protem, while he does that, can I grab a water real quick?
We'll wait.
While we're kind of in a lull, Zach, Jessica, it's going to be a long meeting, just to let you know. We won't be off.
No, you're welcome to stay. No, it's...
We won't be offended if you choose to leave. Thanks.
You're good, you got one.
I didn't put you personally. I'm not saying...
We are Sheri, but given the agenda...
They're abandoning you, keeping you all alone.
We know Sheri will stay, so it's okay. She's got your back.
All right.
Rita.
Thank you.
Apply.
Thank you, Rita. It was very nice to meet you. So we'll go ahead and move on with the Escalon Major Infrastructure Project Quarterly Update.
Okay. Thank you again. So the major infrastructure projects, as we define them right now, are the surface-water connection project. The city does have an allocation of treated surface water through a partnership with SSJID, the city of Manteca, Lathrop, and one other city that I can't remember. So we do have an allocation. We just do not have a way to access the treated water. And so the project that has been explored in the past is a pipeline project to connect to the main line and into the city of Escalon. What that would do is remove our full reliance on groundwater. It is increasingly getting more difficult from a regulatory standpoint on quality as well as quantity because of droughts and other things to access and pull quality groundwater. And so many jurisdictions, many areas are going to treated surface water. We are in a very good position generally in that we already have an allocation, something that was done back in the '90s and moved forward. The project is costly and it continues to get more costly as inflation increases. It's estimated to be about a $14 million project right now. And that is of concern, of course, to ratepayers and council members, just in terms of, you know, biting off that much. We have, in the past, planned for such things. We did have a rate study that will collect over the next several years and has already started, up to about $10 million in rates to fund a portion of this. We have about $1.8 million in water sales to the city of Tracy. And so we have, you know, we've narrowed it down to a relatively small delta gap. And with that gap, council has directed us in the last year or so to apply for grants. Late last year, I believe it was, we applied for a Bureau of Reclamation grant, a federal grant. With the new administration onboard, there has been some pause to some of the standing grants, some of the standing earmarks and those types of things. And so while we initially were going to hear about in the February timeframe, we have not heard subsequently, subsequently, subsequently when we may hear on that grant. So we have applied for other grants. We were successful in receiving at least confirmation that we were going to get a grant through Representative Harder's office. Unfortunately, again, administration issue that's been waylaid. We have applied and been selected to apply through Representative Harder's for the next fiscal year round of money. So they'll move all those projects that, you know, received or were going to receive funding in FY '25 for FY '26. So again, we have that small gap. And then US Senator Padilla's office, we also applied for some funds through that call for projects. So we have three grant applications out there and we are waiting to receive confirmation on hopefully one or more of those.
Can we go back one slide, please? The contract that we have with the city of Tracy, what year was that contract initiated?
We have, it was like almost 10 years ago.
Yeah, so my question is, when can we sit back at the table and renegotiate that, right? Because I'm sure costs have gone up and that's a potential source of revenue for this project, right?
Absolutely.
Are we locked in for an extended period of time? Does it not have a sunset? Is there, what can you tell us?
Yeah. So the way this sale works is, it's not a straight sale. The price that we are getting is a fraction of what a general water sale would be. But it's a way for the city of Tracy to access the water that they normally would, but provide the city of Escalon with some funds for the project. So they're actually doing us a favor. To your question, if we were to move forward with our project, I think we could get into some sort of water sale or water lease arrangement when we actually had access to the water at a more, at a higher rate for a city maybe around here that does not have an allocation into the plant right now.
I mean, do we have an idea what that looks like, like fiscally? What opportunities could present themselves or what kind of revenue could be generated? Are we thinking down that avenue or is that something we're thinking about now? Where do we sit?
Yeah, we do not have a dollar figure. It would be dependent on a number of things, including negotiations between our council and their council and staffs, of course. We'd have to have a willing, you know, sort of buyer or leasur. It'd be a number of different things. But it would, it could be a significant source of revenue for the Water Enterprise Fund and help to mitigate or minimize any future rate increases. We have about 2,100 acre feet of water available to us through this allocation. Currently, we use about 1,500 acre feet of water. So there is more allocation than we currently use. And so we could, in theory, lease or sell, settle some of that water to another city.
So is that something that we can direct staff to look into? Do we need to wait till council communications? Can that be suggested now?
We have been outreach by one city and we are having those conversations. But absolutely, council can formally direct if you feel you need to, staff to consider that option.
Definitely, in my opinion, I'd definitely like to see comps and see what revenue has potential for and how it could potentially impact future rate increases, right? We want to just have these affect us once and then not have to deal with it again for a very long time. So do we need consensus for that? Can I get some support from the group here?
Happy to get my consensus on that.
I have kind of a follow-up question, though. Is there, is this a yearly contract? As he asked if it was a sunset or what the contract looks like, is this now just a year-by-year basis?
With Tracy?
With Tracy.
Yeah. Everything I know, the way I think it would happen is if we moved forward into the next step, actually into construction with the project and then, you know, receiving water, I think we would end the contract with the city of Tracy at that point. And then we'd be free agents, so to speak. And then we could do what we had just discussed prior.
So this kind of goes until one party ends the contract, is that correct?
Yes. I mean, I think so. I don't know if there would be benefit, standing right here right now, I don't know if there would be benefit in breaking the contract with the city of Tracy until such time as we could actually convey and receive the water.
Okay. I'm just, I think my question, I'm not wanting to break everything off right now. I'm just wondering if there is some sort of conversation that happens and what timeline that happens with the city of Tracy over rates and over the contract itself.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if, again, if we get into construction on this project and then receiving water, we would, we would have that conversation with the city of Tracy. And I imagine we would mutually exit that contract at that time.
Okay. And so there's not an increaser on the rate? The rate just stays the same since we came into that contract? It doesn't naturally increase?
No.
Or decrease?
Yeah.
So I have a bigger question. And the bigger question is, we may hear two months, three months, maybe, if these grants are received and on the fifth bullet point down, if the full grant is received, the project's nearly funded, fully funded. However, in previous conversations with Ardua, they're only 60% design complete. So how much time would Ardua need to do to get 100% complete and then we put the project out for bid?
We have talked with them less than six months for them to complete design and it's probably less than that. Last council direction was, you know, sort of pencils down is, I think, a term that was used until such time as we received the grants. But if we got a grant, we would reengage them. They could finalize that in a matter of months. We'd go out to bid and into construction.
I'm just worried about escalation. I mean, every month ticks by. The price just keeps going up and up and up and up. And unfortunately, it's going to be on the, us, the ratepayers that are going to have to pay for it. And so I just, I mean, I, this is a question for the council and the mayor's not here to provide his input, so this may be an unfair question. But if we receive the full grants, are we ready to pull the trigger and say, "Complete the design, let's go"?
Well, for that last bullet point right on this page, upon receipt of status of grant, city staff will proceed per city, per council direction or seek to identify other funding opportunities. Is there anything stopping staff from, even if we get those, to pursue additional funding opportunities for additional costs that may incur, change orders, anything like that? Is there a reason that we can't try and fund, not above, maybe that's the wrong word, but to completion so that there is no delta and we're not left pulling from general fund?
If we get one or two of the grants that are out right now, we are very, very close to fully, fully funded. If we were to get three, now they will have their own requirements. They are not going to necessarily, I mean, I haven't seen all of the grant requirements and criteria, but they're not going to be inclined necessarily to go way above where we're at right now, right? The total project cost. But if we are successful in these grants, we are there. And then into the future, as we take a couple of months, six months to design and then into construction, we can absolutely continue to look for grant opportunities should costs escalate.
Yeah, when it goes out to bid, it just makes sense. So what's our last estimate or dollar amount was approximately a year ago?
Yeah, six or eight months ago.
So not quite. So I'm sure prices have increased and it really is going to depend on what it looks like when it goes out to bid, right? So we still could have a large delta when we get to bid.
So I think the council is aware of this. Don't give me the hairy eyeball.
I already am.
I know. But something to consider is there is an avenue called Design Assist where rather than give Ardua the green light to complete the design, we could go out to bid currently, where we're at in the documents, and then hire a contractor to finish the design of the project. But by doing that, it starts construction that much quicker and we've now mitigated the effects of escalation because they would provide a guaranteed maximum price and they would finish the design to that guaranteed maximum price value. And so that's an avenue to consider once we get these grants. I would just hate that we would just be sitting around for six to eight months while we wait for Ardua to complete the design when we have the funding, we have all the resources and we can pull the trigger and say, "Go". So something to consider.
So I would agree with Jeremy in looking into what other avenues we may have, though I, you know, don't pull the plug or any of that at this point.
Is there a deadline when these grants are supposed to, are supposed to hear back?
No. I mean, it's, we've heard a couple of different dates and I think it'll be when the administration, you know, gets to the end of their process in determining how they want to proceed with some of these. So we do not have a deadline or expected dates yet. All right. So the other project that we talked about is the wastewater treatment plant upgrade When we, when we talk about this, it has morphed over time. In 2014, which is now a long time ago, we did receive a notice of violation and a cease and desist order from the state. We had odors, we had spillage into, you know, kind of bodies of water. We weren't hitting some of the levels that we were supposed to be hitting per the permit that we have with the state. So over the last, now I guess, 11 years and really in the last couple, we have made significant strides in terms of compliance, the compliance piece. We have less odor complaints, we've shored up, so to speak, our berms, we've addressed some of the weed issues, the gopher issues, those types of things that led to the notice of violation and the cease and desist order. And so the state, compliance at least, is not really on our heels encouraging or requiring us to update the permit. So in that timeframe, from about 2014 to 2019, they absolutely were. They wanted to see greater technology in our plant. They wanted to see, you know, kind of this very robust project. And I'm not saying, they're not saying that right now, but it is definitely cooled. And we think we have, we're in the driver's seat a little bit to make recommendations. And that's the spot that we're at now. And so instead of this, you know, the $40 million cost has been bandied about in terms of this project because that's what it was going to cost. We now feel like we have the opportunity to, if nothing else, phase that $40 million because, again, compliance, we're doing better on the compliance. And so instead of calling it an upgrade project, which is what we've historically called it for the last 10 years, you know, it's more of an enhanced maintenance project where there is some new improvements, some maybe new technology, but a lot of it is just fixing and maintaining what we have, actually using some dollars to fix and maintain what we have. And so from that sense, we're in a really good space right now. The other component of this is our plant is divided into two portions. It's not exactly equal, equal, but we have a domestic, that's where all our showers and toilets go, and then we have the industry. And there's two businesses that represent industry, Eckor and Escalon Premier Brands or Kraft Heinz. They are a big portion of our plant. We have separate basins for them, for their water, and they work in a season. So from about July to October, they're in season and they are sending stuff down the pipeline during that timeframe. And we have to ramp up and treat all of that, that water. So where I'm going with that is we are working very closely with them to see what they can do on their site, which in theory should lower overall costs because they can do it quicker, cheaper and easier than we can. And so we have been in, you know, discussions with them to see what they can accomplish onsite. So unfortunately, a little bit, we have kind of a short window in which to test drive, you know, some of these potential solutions. And so last season, we did pilot a project. We found out, which is good information, that that was not the type of technology we needed to improve some of the things that they were sending down. So this year, we are more than strongly encouraging them to pilot another project with a technology that we think could work to help, again, send better and less flow and load, we call it, from what they have been sending. And so in theory, we should be able to parlay the lack of stuff that they are sending into less improvements into the overall project. So $40 million project, instead of just... that that was not the type of technology we needed to improve some of the things that they were sending down. So this year, we are more than strongly encouraging them to pilot another project with a technology that we think could work to help, again, send better and less flow and load, we call it, from what they have been sending. And so in theory, we should be able to parlay the lack of stuff that they are sending into less improvements into the overall project. So $40 million project, instead of just hitting it once, we are looking at phasing the project over time and reducing it through improvements made through industry. So that is generally where we have been working and spending our time. We have partnered relatively well with industry, I will say that. But of course, they have some natural incentives to, I don't know, I don't want to say drag their feet because they're not dragging their feet, but these are major investments that they are looking at taking on. And their business, right, their overall market, I guess, is down as well. No excuse, but, you know, they are looking at major capital investments at the same time that their business is declining. So we are having those conversations with them, and we hope to make strides both in phasing and reducing the overall cost of the plant.
Mayor Protem, may I ask a few questions?
Please.
In regards to industry, do we have a firm commitment from them at all to improve their systems? Or are we just in a position where they're agreeing to try a couple of things and just no huge commitment to capex at their facility?
I will answer the direct question that you asked. We do not have an in writing agreement that they will spend a certain amount. We do have, yeah, go ahead.
Maybe not to spend a certain amount, but for a reduction in waste, we have a firm commitment, like to be able to reduce their waste X percent or whatever is going to be beneficial to the fixes, which I have some questions about the fixes as well, but that are going to jive with what I'm assuming Justin has planned for out there.
Yeah. No, I would not say we have a firm commitment. They are at the table, they are understanding where we are coming from. It has been helpful that the council has prioritized, and we will talk about this in the strategic plan, that the council has prioritized these two projects. And we are expressing to them, we are moving forward. One way or the other, we are moving forward. We think it's beneficial if you are there and you participate. If you are not, then we will figure out a workaround. So they're, and I don't want to sound like it's a threat. We are partners, we are, we are working together on this. But they are understanding our position as we are understanding their position. So no firm commitment, but they are continuing to be at the table.
Have we expressed any potential consequence to not participating?
Softly.
Softly.
At this point.
Okay. So thank you for answering that. I don't know if this goes to Justin or if this goes back to you, City Manager. But with the phased fixes, there's two questions. One is, what is the longevity of those repairs or upgrades or fixes, right? How long do we anticipate that they're going to last? And what is the anticipated budget over what timeframe for those phases?
So we have about four phases, and this is a bit fluid.
Okay.
Because if we get into a pilot project with industry and they send 2/3 of the load that they were before, our plant design has changed significantly. If we get into it and it's like, you know, 5% reduction, then it hasn't changed significantly, right? So there's, there's a bit of, you know, kind of a step, stepping forward on this. We are looking at about four total phases. And really, we can, you know, phase those out as much as we would like. Of course, costs will continue to go up the longer we stretch it out, but we'll also buy ourselves more time in terms of rate increases if we spread it out. So that's a bit fluid as well. So $40 million project, four phases, you're roughly, roughly $10 million per phase.
And then, so since we're not like redoing the wastewater treatment plant, right? It's not like a new plan, we're just some basic fixes and upgrades? Is that the way, is that my understanding correct? So what would be like the longevity of those? Is that, is that just a Band-Aid? Is that something that's, it's going to get us three to five years? Or are we longer term, are we 10, 20 years? Are we talking, you know, potentially a generation before we end up having to address this again, pending additional outstream from, you know, industry?
Yeah. It's much, much, much more than a Band-Aid. And I would say probably generational. And I don't want to, I don't want to misconstrue. There's some new technology and new improvements that will be installed. But some of the major things that we have to do is we have to repair the berms, right? And we have to improve the electrical out there. There's things called headworks, it's, you know, how the flow comes in. Some of that is just maintenance, some of that is just repairing what we have. The headworks would be new. So there, there's a mix of both. So it's, what we're proposing now would be, again, much, much more than a Band-Aid and would be near generational.
If I understand from the previous discussions, the $40 million was to, like originally to revamp the entire thing and bring it up to the 21st century, so to speak, right? Be able to have a ability to take a surplus if it was ever needed in the future, right, as the city grew. So would we still have that capacity to grow? Or does the capacity remain the same?
Largely, it would remain the same. We're at about 50% capacity for domestic. So we have room for growth there. And we are not to, we're probably 60 for industrial?
Easy, huh?
Okay. 60, 70% of capacity for industrial. So there is also room to grow there.
And also just keep in mind too, it's not even so much the flow that we have a hard hand in the water. It's like what Mr. French was saying is the load. So in conjunction with industries and us, and essentially if their load goes down, then we won't have to use as much down at the facility. With the new design, we're hoping we can actually modify it to a smaller design with the capabilities that we have now and rooms to grow if we need to. But the less load someone sends, I mean, the more and more we could take essentially.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, may I make a comment?
Yes, please do.
I just would like to publicly recognize you, Justin, and Tom McCoy. Because when I was elected to council, I heard the $40 million price tag. I was like, "Hell, no". And after taking a tour and you explaining to the council what the issues were, it was really eye opening. And so to the City Manager's point, you've kind of kept the state happy. I use that term loosely, but happy. And thinking of these pilot projects to put the burden off of the ratepayers and more so on industry and then other ideas about enhancing landscaping to keep our friends at Del Rio so the odors and they don't go that way. And so it's that kind of out of the box thinking that I know that you've had an integral part in, along with Mr. McCoy. And it's very, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Any more comments up here at council?
One quick question, City Manager. Speaking of Del Rio, have there been any more discussions about them utilizing our wastewater treatment plant?
No, they have expressed at this time that they are going to explore more internal options and would get back with us if those did not work and they needed to explore other options.
Please continue.
That's it.
All right. We'll move on to the final presentation of the evening. The Escalon 2025-26 Strategic Plan First Quarter Update.
Okay. So three months ago, the council adopted the 2025-2026 Strategic Plan. And so as we committed to, we want to bring quarterly updates before the council. We have kept this high level, of course, you know, we're in the first three months. But we will share with you sort of progress. And if we go to the next slide. There are four strategic priorities, the first one of which is economic development. You will see our icons on the right. The green check mark is completed. We just, in fact, sort of finalized that effort today, although maybe we will have one more committee member. So that is good work on the council's part to finalize that before the deadline there. The next three things, the first is develop an economic development strategic plan. So you will see in the budget later tonight that we have allocated some funding for an economic development strategic plan. Part of the effort here, of course, is to get the EDC, the Economic Development Committee, up and running and then work a plan that we would hire a consultant to help us prepare through and with the Economic Development Committee. So you see the deadline there, October 2026. The symbol that you see is on track. We're on the path, it's green. We are making good progress towards that goal and that timeline. We staff have committed to meet with 10 businesses each year. And what we hope to derive from these conversations is how, what can we do to help? What are you experiencing? What would help globally? We can feed that information not only into our processes but into the Economic Development Committee process. I have met with four businesses so far, and we are on track with that goal. And then invest in economic development, create a program by December 2026 here, again, through and with the Economic Development Committee, using probably, and we'll talk about this through the budget, using Measure P funds to actually invest in economic development. So I don't know if that's business incentives. I don't know if that's, you know, tax breaks. It could be any number of things. And again, through the council and the Economic Development Committee, we will establish that over time. So that is where we are on economic development. Fiscal stability is next, and I will turn it over to Celinda.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Protem. All right, so we've got our adopted, adopted balance budget, our fiscal year 2526. We are living that budget today. We're almost done with it. June will finalize sometime in July. We'll know exactly where we are, but right now, we're on track. Did I get that wrong, fiscal year 2526? That's our upcoming budget that we were talking about.
So maybe a little presumptuous to read checkmarks, but it is on the agenda.
We did that. We're going to adopt that. So it's, we're currently in proposed for the 2526.
Is that a challenge?
We're living 2425, we need to adopt. So we'll, we're hopeful that green check.
Strategic plan for the next 10 minutes.
I'm very little, we, little, we haven't done that yet. We did adopt a clean fiscal year 2324 financial audit by April 1st, 2025. We're working on that right now. I really hope that's going to be done soon. We've gone way past the deadline that we had for the new consultant, but they're doing a very thorough job. They're happy with the current year's transactions. They're just still trying to prove those prior year numbers given by the prior auditor. Develop an investment strategy and grow earned revenue by 50%. We are working very diligently in that area. We've made some great strides as far as the investment, and we'll go through that in some additional slides later on tonight. One of these areas in this is a long-term investment strategy that's three to five years out. And so depending on the different monies that are needed for various projects, we have the two major projects that were discussed earlier. We have some things in play for that, for the monies that are needed three to five years out. We'll talk about this a little bit with budget. Five-year timeframe is pretty much tomorrow. 10-year is a little bit past that, 15-year is a little past. And we really need to be looking at 20 years. So that's kind of what we're hoping to grow the money and have a nice process that has money for Escalon going forward. And reduce the city's CalPERS liability by 10%. In the year that we're in now, we've made a few moves that has helped to reduce that CalPERS liability. And we're going to ask council to ratify the new plan that we have for the 2526 year. That has not been adopted yet, but I really hope it will be.
Thank you.
And then the next is police, and I'll turn it over to the chief.
So my goals are the goal for the police department, achieve 100% staffing levels by December of '25, increase officer tenure and maintain no more than one probationary officer on the fourth at any given time. So in order to achieve these goals, I'm working from both external recruitment and internal retention. Due to ongoing personnel issues, we likely won't meet these goals. We are working, kind of taking a step back to move forward. So progress is being made. Just going to be possibly a little bit slower than hoped for or anticipating. For recruitment, I've expanded our recruitment and advertising to allow online applications through external mediums, not just city resources and city websites. I established a reserve officer policy to mandate participation in the program. We had a reserve program where we'd have officers not completing the FTO. And so they couldn't, through, with current post regulations, they can't cover shifts like they used to. And so it really hurt us internally as far as how we utilize our reserves. And so once we get off FTO, once we do have an opening, they can roll straight in without any additional training. They're going straight into a full-time position. For the retention, I'm working on improving morale and working conditions as well in providing more opportunities for specialized training to advance their careers. Want to get input from the officers to see what trainings are you interested in going in, going to? The city has several needs in staying long-term and looking long-term. Where would you like to see your career go? What would you like to learn? What would you like to do? Because here in Escalon, the opportunities are there. We just need to present our officers with them. I'm attempting to brew, I'm attempting to improve productivity and morale by doing more officer recognition, as we've noticed today. I'm allowing officers to select training they would like to attend. I simplified the traffic collision reporting system for minor non-injury traffic collisions. Other agencies, for non-injury collisions where there's minor damage, they will make the person do a name exchange. Officer won't even take a report. I don't, I don't want to reduce services for the citizens, but I still wanted to kind of free up our officers. So I created a carbon copy form that has all the information they need for their insurance. So essentially, the officer on scene fills out the form. It's got all the information necessary. They get a copy right there. It frees up the officer's time. It provides the service to the community, and it also frees up records for not having to deal with the records request for getting that traffic collision report. Improved the officer's work writing, improved the officer's report writing workstations to increase the productivity. They got two monitors. The workstations are kind of small. They were very cluttered. I mounted the monitors on the wall and kind of pushed everything back to give them a lot more workspace so they can actually be more productive when they're writing their reports. And then also utilizing unused equipment, i.e. the motorcycle, to reestablish the motors unit that was dormant for several years. Kind of working internally to help make the department better and more efficient with what we've got.
Thank you. Thank you for doing what you can with what you can.
And then the fourth item is infrastructure. And we just spoke about the surface water project and the wastewater treatment plant. We have goals in the next couple of years to really get these projects to the next step. Construction for the surface water project and some sort of, you know, implementation, whether it's construction or otherwise of the wastewater treatment plant. And then we have committed, like we did last year, to construct six capital improvement projects in 2025. We are well on our way to that. And hopefully, you and the residents are seeing the improvements to the community. And that's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments up here before we move on? Any questions or comments out in the audience? Great, thank you. How are we feeling about a short recess?
Yes, please.
Okay, awesome. So it is past nine, it's 9:09. We'll go ahead and call a short five-minute recess, and we'll return.
Aren't you a Packers fan?
I am.
We got Aaron Rodgers now.
Yeah.
You guys just can't make a big quarterback decision, can you?
I said, you know what? If he goes, if he's high on shrooms and he went to the Super Bowl, so be it.
As soon as it was cut.
All right, bring it back.
All right.
We're back. Okay. Welcome back. We'll move on to the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or a member of the public for special consideration. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent calendar?
No, ma'am.
No.
Any comments from the audience? All right, can I get a motion?
Chair, as has been our practice, when the council accepts a project, we will do a presentation for the before and after. And so we do have that. And I will just call out, it's very clearly stated in the agenda, but we did have change orders that exceeded the authorized amount to less than a half a percent of the project. These change orders were largely things that we identified during construction in the project that we felt were beneficial to the overall project and the overall community. The unit costs of the things that were added were the same unit cost as what was approved by the council in the bid amount. So with that note, I will go through the before and after. What were you going to do? I guess I'll do it. So this is, again, the Dent Avenue sidewalk project. Part of what we wanted to accomplish was want to infill sidewalk areas to install sidewalk where there were no sidewalks, especially around school sites. So we started around Dent School so that we had a safer atmosphere for kids and parents to walk to school. So you can see here in the before pictures, many areas in this part of town that do not have connected sidewalks. And so if you go to the afters, there is now sidewalks. And we feel like, we call it white glove service sometimes, we feel like we did right by the residents to the extent we could without sort of being a gift of public funds or doing, you know, something extravagant that we weren't able to do for others. But Justin and the crew really were out there every day, making sure that when an issue arose, we could address it during the project. So you'll see new pavement, new striping, new ADA accessibility ramps, new sidewalk, of course. We have some valley gutters here for drainage. So overall, the area of town is improved.
Steph, I would like you to pull up picture number 11. So without getting into specifics, there is a resident that, whose home is somewhere on this street, whose daughter attended the same class as my son. And I asked her at a different event how the project was going, and she said, "Don't let your head get big." She said, "Justin Collins has made this project exemplary. His attention to detail, his hard work, he's out here every day talking to the neighbors. He's keeping us informed. He's working with us, and he's going," what she interpreted as above and beyond for customer service. So just want to say publicly, Justin, if, I hope Phase Two goes as good as Phase One because you might have made a lot of raving fans on Phase One, and that's just your nature. And appreciate everything that you're doing for the community.
They've played teamwork. Thank you, though.
And holding the contractors accountable, too. That's.
Yeah, that dead grass got replaced, too, by the way.
Yeah, good job.
You went over budget?
First time. I hope it's selling, Jeff. Thanks for bringing it up.
There's a reason that I'm pointing it out. Take back everything nice I ever said about you. No. I know that you did a fantastic job in the area. I was able to go with you and, you know, talk to a resident and see the way that you, you know, handled them. You just take phenomenal care of this city and really, really appreciate you and all that you do and your crew does for this town.
Thank you.
I know, said in jest, I will just make a distinction between going over budget and adding things to the project that are beneficial to the community.
We call that enhancements, Mr. French, enhancements.
This is probably the only time I'm going to get to call him on that, so I'm going to do it.
What great job at repairing some of those unforeseen. I mean, I, you know, saw come kind of some of the list of things that needed to go back and revisit it, and some of those are very unforeseen issues. So nice job going back and making good on all of that. Appreciate it.
Ms. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, with that, do I have?
I'll motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We'll move on to staff communications and updates. May update, city manager.
Maybe in light of the number of things that we have on the agenda, all the reports are in the agenda package. If there are any questions that the council has, we can certainly answer those, but maybe we can proceed if there are no questions.
Are there any questions? Okay. We'll move on to agenda item number 10, the SJ COG Citizen Advisory Committee Quarterly Update.
They left.
And they are not present, so maybe we can call them back at the next.
It is also, and I don't, it is also in your agenda package, and it's not every time that a presentation is actually provided.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Can I make a request to the council? Given the time and our attendees, and before we get into the budget, because I'm sure there's going to be questions, I would like to formally request that we move item number 13 up.
Up?
Really, up to, prior to discussion of the budget. Being respective of.
Of her time.
Of her time.
Okay. Is anybody opposed to moving 13 up to before 11?
No.
Okay. Okay, as that, we move on to matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on any item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. And with that, do we have anyone from the audience that would like to speak?
I'm Teri Niskern. I'm an experienced yoga instructor.
Hold on one second. We didn't get to that item yet. This is just.
Oh, I saw my name on the board. I'm not supposed to be here?
Not yet.
That's okay, but is this referencing, referring to the yoga program?
Yes.
Give us 30 seconds.
So can you let me know? I'm having a little hard time hearing you guys.
No, it's okay. You're next.
I'm sitting way in the back, but I'll sit up front.
Yep. Okay, no problem. You might want to sit right there.
I don't know, I'm going to get my first.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the audience that has any? Okay, awesome. All right.
No one online.
And no one online. Great, we'll move on to administrative matters, moving number 13 up. The agenda item request, consideration of community center fee waiver for senior yoga program through instructor Tari Niskern, correct? All right.
So, actually, sorry, Steph, go ahead.
You can do it if you want.
So I'll just throw this out there. So Ms. Teri approached a group of seniors last fall about holding a specific senior program. And so we've been talking about it, and it's gone through the rec commission as an approved program. The rec commission voted for it. And so after the rec commission approved it, the city manager and I had a discussion. But it's been the will of the councils, both the previous council and our council, that anything, any program specifically designed for seniors, we waive the use of the community center. So currently, the senior fun bunch, we don't charge them use of the community center. They are a pretty clean group. They clean up after themselves. It's not very minimal, it's very minimal impact to staff. There's the senior lunch program, and they take care of themselves. It's not happening currently, but this council decided to give no charge in fees of the foyer in the community center when Escalon Strong was doing its food distribution program. So similar to that, I was talking with the city manager, and because this program is specifically designed for seniors, myself and the yoga instructor are requesting a waive in the fees of the use of the community center, the 25-cent fee, or 25% fee for the program itself. And what that allows is rather than charge a standard tuition or attendance rate, and that, I don't even know, is she the applicant? Or the program manager, we'll just call you a program manager, is intending to charge the seniors a free will offering. And so it's pretty much, it keeps the cost low, it provides a benefit to our seniors in the community, and it gets them up, it gets them moving, et cetera, et cetera. Just for full transparency, we do have a current yoga program. Actually, we currently have two yoga programs. One is a senior chair program, senior chair yoga program that is held at the Presbyterian, no, what church is that? At the Methodist Church, yes, on Mondays. It used to be at the library. And also one yoga for all ages at the community center on Thursday evenings. Teri and I have had conversations with that yoga instructor and that wing, and she is perfectly fine with this. She has no reservations, no issues. So all that being said, in my discussions with the city manager, the, he felt it would be prudent for, as far as getting council approval on the waiver of fees of the use of the community center.
Yeah, definitely council consideration. Just to kind of set the item here, so, and to add on to what council member Strowman said, to bolster the city's recreational offerings, the city offers up the community center and parks to basically instructors who have an expertise in some field. As is mentioned in the staff report, we have karate lessons, we have dance lessons, we have yoga lessons, we used to have. we have yoga lessons, we used to have dog training and other things. What the city receives from that to defray some of the overhead and maintenance costs is 25 percent of the class income. The item before you here is to waive that 25 percent. And the instructor would provide only to seniors. And for, I think, what she is calling a thank offering, which is very, you know, very similar to a free will offering, so it's no set amount. But if someone wanted to pay as a kind of a thank you, as an appreciation, they could. If someone did not want to pay, they would, they didn't, they would not have to pay. So the kind of two distinctions there are the thank offering and the seniors using the community center for this instruction in this course. And the city would not receive that 25 percent of class income as a revenue.
And as far as signups go, there would be, I mean, it's very minimal cost, so people, seniors can drop in when they're, when they want to attend. When, so there is no, the overhead costs are pretty much to, for the electricity to the community center, there's no other staff admin time that would be associated with this.
Just cleaning.
Yes. So that's the background.
So question for the program, because they just kind of show up to the program. Is there a waiver that is signed, needs to be signed, either through electronically or a paper waiver that participants will be signing to participate?
Can you come up to the podium?
I apologize for being overzealous. I thought I was going to be here till 11. Someone said you're probably going to be here till 11, so I got excited. I was being called. All right, so the question was to me about the waiver?
If they'll have a waiver to sign, if they have one on site or if there's an electronic one, that they'll be able to sign?
Absolutely. Along with liability, too. They will be signing liability.
Okay, perfect. Anybody else have any questions up here?
Can I tell you about the program?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm an experienced certified yoga instructor, and I focus on teaching seniors, which is age 55 to lifetime. I am going to, I'm planning to introduce a Hawaiian yoga, which entails nature-based movements. And aloha actually is love and compassion. And that is something I represent for our seniors. I want to be able to get them out of their homes for better health and get them moving. My program focuses on breathwork, postures, and mindful movements to help promote circulation, relieve from arthritis stiffness. It balances all the body systems, promoting better health. And that includes your metabolism. So it helps with people, elderly tend to maybe, if they're inactive, they might be gaining weight. So this would be a class to help them to keep that in check. They do sit at home, some of them, because they're on a fixed income. And so that's why we are asking that the fee be waived so that everybody can have an opportunity to come and be a part of the class. So not everybody can afford the fee. Some can, but here's a chance to utilize the community center as an outreach to our seniors, which I have a big heart for. And I think that concludes. Oh, and safety. Safety is something, a big part of my training, to keep the seniors safe, even though they will be in a chair. That's one of my main focuses, on teaching them how to exercise, but don't hurt themselves as far as like their back or their knees, stuff like that. So, any other questions?
Perfect. Thank you.
May I leave now? Or is it?
We'll vote on it if you want to stay for the vote. And then we'll be done.
Thank you.
So with that, are there any comments, or I can take a motion?
I will make a motion to waive the 25 percent fee for this yoga class.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you. Okay, so now, moving on, we will now consider to adopt the fiscal year 2526 proposed budget.
Thank you, council, for moving that item.
Good evening, everyone, again. Okay, so just to reiterate, the year that we are in now is 2425. We're doing pretty well on that budget. We're going to move ourselves into this proposed 2526. The current year, we had a reset year, and 2526 is really our first budget where we're going to use this as a real-life budget tool. We're going to make sure that this is nimble and meets all of our needs with the new types of revenue that we are going to be experiencing this year. We're expecting, oh, well, Michelle, sorry, there we go. We're expecting a little bit more income this year, so the budget amount hasn't increased. But I wanted to go through the objectives. They remain about the same as we had for last year. Balanced budget, maintaining our current service levels, keeping the budget process easy to understand. Maximizing our investment opportunities has taken a little bit of a change. We're looking at not only current investments, but our future needs. Strategic plan priorities have been added in this, this year. And we're going to be reporting on our Measure P income and expenses monthly and quarterly, so that we all can see what's going on with that. And that will tie in with our new committee. Got our fund descriptions. We're going to be dealing mostly with the general fund. This is our general fund budget. The other different types of funds we can look at individually, especially like the landscape lighting and development funds. Those will have their own projects, reports, and their own presentation. Going through our fiscal policies, and I'm going through this a little bit quickly. So if we have any questions, let me know. A lot of this is the same as what we had from last year. We're building upon that reset function that we had and moving into this new budget. Our fiscal management, again, we're doing all the normal things like maximizing our revenues, reducing our costs. Staff has done quite a bit to reduce basic core expenses, like the telephone and other types of things that we just deal with every day, getting those reduced. Transparency, providing as much reporting as we can, quarterly and monthly, and increasing our operational efficiencies so that we're able to just use every dollar of our best possible use as we can. Anything else on there? Okay, on to the next one. So this is our budget summary. Our number this year is going to be 6.3 million. We're looking at our revenues and expenses balanced again. We have a higher revenue amount for 2526 as we are expecting Measure P tax revenues to increase, and we're also expecting our investment revenues to increase. Our tax revenue is about 80 percent of the total revenue that we deal with, so that's our most important focus. We have some other areas, like our investments and cell tower revenues or storage fees, other smaller amounts of money that are coming in. But any change in the tax revenue sphere is going to really affect the city. So that's our biggest area. The expenses have grown, and we're looking at spending 3.7 million in safety. Our development services, about 830,000. Streets and parks has gone up, and recreation is about 6.5 percent of what the total budget is at 414. It is subsidized by the city, so that's an area where we may look at separately. But in the summary sphere here, we have our balanced budget, and we're going to talk about taxes. So our sales tax history shows us over the past few years that sales tax has been reducing. And we're looking at our Measure P monies being a duplicate of our base taxes. So we really need to see what our historical sales tax collections have been. Sales tax history information is a little late in coming because of the fact we're dealing with the state and their timeline. So there is a outside provider that gives us all this great information, and we're able to dump this into Power BI and take a look at what our fiscal years show. So this slide is basically telling us what our top businesses are. Service stations, auto supply stores, building materials, fast food, and restaurants. So you can look, that's the top five. I think we're showing the top 16 here, just for context. Used car sales, previous year there wasn't anything. We can pretty much tell which used car sales division that is. This particular type of information I can provide by business type, but I can't provide by business name. So that slide has quite a bit on there. Basically, it's just telling us that that sales tax collection has been reducing over the years. Our sales tax forecast, will it work? There we go. So our sales tax forecast through 2032 shows a slight decline in base sales tax. So what that means for us is that if we were expecting a million and we're only getting 900,000, that 2 million drops to 1.8. Because we're looking at doubling our base sales tax collections. So these declines would let us know that we have to really have a modest approach to how much money we're going to be receiving from that Measure P. We don't want to spend it five and six times over. We want to have an actual modest estimate of what we're going to be receiving. I would think that things that are happening with the national forecast may affect these numbers as well. As we saw on our previous slide, tax base for fuel is one of the higher areas. So if fuel prices reduce, our tax collected will reduce. We take a look at those top five categories that we had. Fast food was one of them. I don't think that's going to reduce. Not by much. Our investments is another area where we saw increased revenues, increased estimated revenues. This slide shows us, right now, we are still in the month of June, so we don't have actuals for all of June. But in the white area there, I'm estimating about 141,000 coming in. In this next month, we will have those actual figures mid-July. Again, we have to wait about 15, 20 days for all those things to come in. Some of the investment revenue is quarterly, some is monthly. We have a nice little cash on hand by month. You've got a smile there, because we start, as we've seen before in previous presentations, we don't receive all of our money in equal shares. We have more of it coming towards the end of the year where we're using that fund balance to pay for expenses the first two quarters. So these, again, have a couple, a couple of interesting pieces of information, and how much cash we have, how much we can get in two days, what we'd have to sell and transfer, and that we have about a million in long-term investments. That's that three to five I was talking about before. We're expecting about 290, thereabouts, at the highest for the investment income for this 2526, but about 970 overall. So this is a market increase over previous years. Investments, all funds. So this slide, and of course, I'll make this available online. It's a lot of information all kind of shoved into a few slides here. But it shows how we have our LAIF, our local agency investment fund, our SOTERA investments, which is our new as of last year, and the Oak Valley Bank sweep. That's actually doing pretty good for us, $82,000 this year that we have not gotten previously. So small money in the grand scheme, but good money still.
Good job.
See, will it go for me? There we go. Strategic priorities, mine is fiscal stability, as we saw before. It's the area that I'm looking at the most, and it's all about the money. So first, we look at ways to earn and save as many dollars as possible. And then we look to where we can make $1 into 2, or 1 and 1/2, or 1 plus. And there is a couple of areas where we can do that within the city. It has to do with the long-term debt, paying that down. It was my ambitious goal to gather all of the amounts that are owed and pay that off over 10 years. I think right now, we're going to be looking at the unfunded liability portion that's on the CalPERS debt. So this is the indebtedness for all funds, meaning what we owe to outside lenders, inner funds, and that CalPERS amount. That CalPERS amount is probably going to yield us the most gain. Paying that off, you can save a couple million dollars over 10 years. The payoff is 10 years. The savings would be over the estimated 20 that they would like us to pay this off. This goes into the long-term fiscal stability piece that I like to talk about. And really, being able to pay off all the city's debt quicker than what's anticipated saves interest dollars, and it saves a lot. We were talking about those long-term, big projects that we had and needing a few million dollars. This is 3.8 if we could pay all this off. So there's ways to get some of that money that's needed. And this is the UAAL, or the Unfunded Accrued Liability.
Can we go back?
Sure. Maybe we can. There we go. Are you helping me, Michelle?
Yes.
I'm going to make you.
No, I'm sorry.
One more?
No, nope. I was trying to understand the interfund loans. But I think I understand.
All right, so this is the payoff summary of that CalPERS unfunded piece on one slide. So it leaves quite a bit out. But the gist of this is, if we are able to make additional payments on this, we fall into a scenario of accelerated payoff without having to refinance this. CalPERS will allow us to bundle all of our different retirement lines into one, but that would force us to pay a higher required payment. So by doing it this way, we have total control over how much we pay. We can mimic an accelerated payoff of 10 years and have the same outcome where that pink area continues to reduce the balance that's owed, but we're not locked into a refinanced higher amount. There's a couple of pieces to this. Originally, last year, we did the lump sum payment, which saved us 3.5 percent off of the required payment. So there's a required payment piece. It doesn't matter what we think or want, we have to pay it. They're requiring that amount. So to get that small discount from it was very helpful. We also took the small gains from that and paid off a few of the smaller lines. And we're able to find out that dollar for dollar, the interest amount reduced. So applying this to the bigger lines that are due, which is for police and for miscellaneous, is what it's called, but it's for everybody else. And we can take those two larger lines, pay them off. And you'll find the details for all this, it's quite a lot, but it is in the budget package that was sent with tonight's meeting package. So, there we go. Let me go back one slide here, Michelle. This is over 10 years. So the commitment that we're asking for is to be able to make these extra payments over the next 10 years, so that that dark blue line isn't still hanging over the city. It reduces the required payments due. It reduces the total debt. And if in the future the city wants to buy out of CalPERS, it would reduce the amount that's owed and that large amount that's due to, at a payout. So it does a couple of good things. It also preserves that money year after year that would climb for required payments. It reduces those. So I really don't know why anybody wouldn't pay this thing off faster, but if we start now, it would be done in 10 years.
Well, it says at the top there that the required yearly payment for 2526 is 580. And the next year goes to 622.
And up and up.
So what is the payment you're suggesting? What's the over, the above 580 or the above?
On another slide, it is, for this year, it's 322,000.
Above?
Above the required. The 580, I would pay off in a lump sum. We would save 3.5 percent, which is about $23,000. That money goes back in with the other, so I'm paying another 300, plus that. And it just eats away at that interest. And we will have about a 14 percent reduction, which my part of the fiscal stability plan is to reduce it by 10 percent. So we're able to meet and exceed that 10 percent. You'll see kind of where that pink really teeters there in the year five or six. We really see just a drastic note dive of that balance due after we get a few years of this.
And so it should go down, not up, right?
Yeah.
So that, every year, instead of that increasing, it'll.
If we were to simply continue the way we are now, making the minimum payments, we would have the minimum payment. The balance does not reduce as much as you would like. It's not a one-to-one, because we also have to fight the difference between what CalPERS actually earns on their investment money and what they thought they were going to earn. And that actuarial report that they prepare each year just takes that extra money and plops it right on the end. So it is almost like a variable rate home loan. So it is almost like a variable rate home loan, where you just really never know exactly what that rate's going to be. It goes up with the market. This goes up with their guess as to how much they're going to earn. We have a pretty good idea of what we are earning, and we're using those earnings to pay this down. That's kind of the vehicle where it's going. The 3.5% payoff, our lump sum reduction in required payment, the additional payment. And then the difference between what's required and the additional payment, year over year, starts to get smaller and smaller.
That really heavily weighs under the assumption that CalPERS is managing their funds in a profitable manner, right?
Right.
Which historically, at least of late, isn't something that we necessarily see.
We had a presentation a few minutes back that kind of gave the history of, back in the 80s and 90s, when that teetered the wrong direction. And so they've been, in cities all over. We happen to be in it, in a large pool. So it's slightly different for us than some of the bigger cities. But we've been kind of trying to pay that back, or pay back what should have been paid. If someone retired and they lived to be so long and all these different things, how much of this big balloon do you need to have? And that's what they're wanting us to pay off. And we're doing well as far as the percentage funded, but we're just paying a whole bunch of interest that doesn't need to be paid. The city could do a lot better with the money in hand rather than paying out to CalPERS.
I think the strategy actually defends better against any delta that CalPERS would have with estimates versus actuals. The lower that big number is, the lower any true-up would be when they miss their mark. So it actually defends better against their mismanagement, or however we phrase that.
And if they happen to have a good year, our balance would go down because the pool amount is worth more. So our little piece of it, our percentage piece of that big, huge pool, would actually go down if they did do well. So we hope for them to do well. But the reality is that it's been year after year after year of them not quite meeting that mark and them adding that extra to the end.
So I just want to point out, I know that we have a pretty good handle of this, as well as city staff, but to our constituents. And in a nutshell, what we're seeing here is, I don't know if this has ever happened in this city's history, but through Celinda's hard work and out-of-the-box thinking, she's coming up with ways that the city is actually making money on investment while reducing the overhead, or the overall liability and the debt that has gotten the city in a financial position for the last however many years. And so, really, this out-of-the-box thinking is really putting this city on financial stability for years to come. And so, it's very, very much appreciated.
That's the goal.
Oh, thank you. I know it seems small, but seriously, thank you.
And the totally-in-the-weeds explanation of this, that's two or three pages long, is within the packet. It's just, and that'll show you the actual dollars amount. How much are we expected to pay over? CalPERS has a nice little example of exactly how they apply all those percentages saved and things. It's great.
And for the community's benefit, if you review this budget and you have questions, I encourage you to call City Hall. Call Celinda. She'll sit down and she'll walk you through this and explain everything. It's an open door. It's the city's budget, and we want to make sure the community understands it as well.
Better get a second line. In the budget somewhere, does it outline our plan to pay back some of the intra-fund loans that we have that are sitting out there? Can we touch base on that?
The inter-fund loans are based on the ability, or the money, the source of the payments is the DIFIs or the development funds.
Impact fees.
Development impact, thank you. We don't collect any of those because we're not growing at the rate that we'd be required to make these large payments. So we're collecting some small amounts of DIFIs. It's not enough to pay off any of this.
Not in particularly for this. So like, the monies that were borrowed for, like, to build this building, right? That was an inter-fund loan?
There's a library loan. That's probably what you're thinking of.
Yeah, those are inter-fund loans. So that's all just coming from repayment? It's only coming from those fees? Is that also accruing interest, where it's beneficial to identify additional funds to pay that down similarly to what we're doing here? Or are we on the best course?
Any monies that are in the DFI accounts are earning interest. There's not enough to pay down that. It's Fund 209. Fund 209, when that inter-fund loan was made, was from the 100, which is general fund, from general fund to 209 to pay for this. But then we went and put that particular asset back into the general fund in the depreciation tables. So there's the expenses already there in the general fund. The general fund paid for it. But here, we have this 209 money that's supposed to come pay for it. There's no money here in that Fund 209 because we're not collecting enough DIFIs. And I don't think we will. Because unless we intend to grow, which I don't think is the intention of the city, the city's intention is to stay small or to do small growth patterns, the money's just not going to be there to pay it. So we will have to have a separate conversation about, do we, what do we do with those, those loans?
Something to look out for next budget cycle?
It's right pocket, left pocket. You know, we're just taking the money from one to the other. The general fund has already paid for all these things. We're just saying, okay, we have this other source that we can use to pay. It would take, you know, 50 bazillion years to pay it off with what we're getting now, unless all of a sudden we want to start increasing the DIFIs. Which I don't anticipate that. So in keeping with what we have seen is the goals and mode of the city, that's simply not going to happen. So we'll have to find a different way to remove those. Pay them with general fund.
Something to explore for next budget cycle? Something not included in this go-round?
Definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's outside money, I guess. Any other questions? I know this is quite summary and top-level. We have all the detail that we could possibly want in the other reports. And I'll make sure to put this online as well.
Keep up the great work.
I appreciate it. I know more about the UAAL than I ever thought I ever would.
Anybody should ever know.
Well, and it's a bit convoluted, a little confusing, and just not something... The way that this all works is just out of how I would think the state of California would handle these things. It is, you know, putting liability because of their bad foreseeing of the market, putting cities in this liability situation and not having something to help us out. Because putting cities in debt is putting California citizens in debt. So I appreciate your hard work, trying to get us out of this situation. But knowing, going to the city's seminar in the beginning of the year, I know how many cities are in the same situation as we are right now. And so I appreciate you working hard to get us at least out of that hole.
Yeah, you can read all kinds of stories about different cities that have tried to buy out.
Yeah.
It really does, it's a decades-long process, unless you just have a pile of money ready to buy them out.
I mean, that's my first, you know, when you start looking into it, the first thing is, how do we get out of this? And how do we get into a different system? Because this is just not working. Like financially, the numbers don't work. And obviously, they don't work. That's where we're sitting at right now. And the answer is, yeah, we got into it, and now it's hard to get out. It's, that's it, is we are stuck until we can pay everything out and pay everything off. And even then, we'll see where we're at. So, anyway, I appreciate your work getting us into the other side. Does anybody have any comments up here? Any more questions, comments, suggestions?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the '25, '26 proposed budget. Oops, sorry.
But she went out to the public, right?
Oh.
She did. We technically need to go out because there could be someone that pops up online or...
Apologize. We'll take this out to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this subject matter? And then is there anybody online that would like to speak on this subject matter? All right, we'll bring it back to council. And can I get a motion?
Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 proposed budget as presented to council.
Can I get a second?
I will second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Is that the lowest attendance that we've had for a budget proposal?
Right, it has to be, man.
No offense, sir, you know, I know.
I mean, the workshop was, I'm surprised at how few people this year, with all the interest last year, how few people came to the budget workshop and then how few people are interested in saying something today about the budget. So, I mean, that means maybe we're doing things good. We hear more when it's bad than, you know, so...
Guys, it is June 16th, and like, that means we're actually ahead of the fiscal year. So people can't complain that we're not, we're actually passing the budget before the end of the fiscal year. So, I don't know.
All right, moving on, a consideration of fee waiver policy to waive certain user fees applicable to other local government agencies.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So as was read, the item before you is to consider, and this was an item brought up by Councilmember Strowman as part of our work through the FIRE 2+2 Committee that we have. It is to consider fee waivers for certain user fees imposed upon local governments. So really, the rationale here is, as was worked out by our legal group, the rationale is, we are a government. We provide services to the public. The public is our customers. We sometimes work with other local governments who also utilize their scarce funding, income, and revenues to provide services for the public. If we are trading funds for services, we're really no better off than we were before, nor are the residents any better off than they were before. And so, you know, this item before you would limit that, of course, to local governments. And we have really highlighted the FIRE district, as well as the school district, to kind of utilize this potential fee waiver. There would be an administrative process, as established by the council, for us to approve the fee waiver. And of course, the council, kind of here in the third paragraph, the city manager has the discretion to not approve or suspend at any time. And then the council, of course, can cancel or modify any program that was established. If we get into this and we, you know, couldn't see around a corner, it didn't work, or something else happened, of course, we could amend or cancel the policy. So that's really the long and short of the item. And we are happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Do you have questions? What are the fees for those two agencies this would be applicable to? And what is the financial impact to having those fees waived?
Steph, can I answer a question? Because it kind of ties into what prompted this request, agenda item request in the first place. So Mayor and I were approached at the 2x2 meeting from the FIRE Department because they were intending to do solar on their roof, on one of their properties. And they were charged a $1,300 fee, building permit fee, based off the formula that we charge everybody else. And so their board chair, Joe, I can't remember his last name, approached me and basically said, look, it's not a matter of $1,300. It's more so being a good neighbor and being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. Because currently, right now, the FIRE Department believes that they provide a service to the city. That being, they do, well, I think they probably still will do it once they fill the position. They have a battalion chief that assists the planning with building and project reviews. They assist public works in the various testing of fire hydrants. They, coming up next week, they will be going around and inspecting all the firework booths. And they don't charge the city anything. And so, they kind of do, so their approach is, why do we want to charge the city when we're actually just trying to be good neighbors? And they actually took the $1,300 fee as, almost as a slap in the face. And that's just standard building permit fee. And so, that's what triggered this item. As far as the school district, staff could answer it better if there are specific instances where the city would charge the school district a fee for something. But similar to the FIRE Department, as you know, Mayor Protem and Mayor are part of the 2x2 Committee and working really hard to build that and solidify that relationship with the school district. And so, if there may be a situation where the school district is requesting the use of fees. Because at the end of the day, who suffers? It's the taxpayers. And what's to be gained by charging those fees? That's my whole thing.
Well, that's my question. If the taxpayer suffers and we're just covering a fee, we're just eating it. It's costing us admin time. Taxpayers are still paying it. So if we get back to that original question with the potential fees and then the fiscal impact.
Yeah, so the example that was raised was a $1,400 fee for a building permit. To my knowledge, at least in the last two years, I don't think there's another example with the FIRE district or the school district of us working with them on something that we would have charged a fee. And therefore, what we put in the fiscal impact is anticipated there would be no measurable fiscal impact. 10 o'clock.
Yeah, from my opinion, I feel that sets us up to potentially be robbed blind by not understanding what it is. And I think that the process should be, if they want a fee waived, that they can come to us as city council and request a specific fee to be waived, especially like in that instance. I don't think we should just give blanket approval to waive fees. Just my opinion.
When the, like, I understand and I respect what you're saying. The $1,400 fee, that was, there was no, at least the way I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, there was no calculation on what that $1,400 was. It was just based off the valuation of their solar project. And so, there may have been staff time involved, but it was just calculation of the total construction cost, and there's your $1,400. And so, they were looking at it more so...
I think there's time involved in the permitting process, through you, the plans, inspections, all those types of things. And the permit, basically, the permit fee covers plan check review and other costs in terms of the inspections. So the $1,400 is probably tied to the estimated value of the improvements.
Right.
And it's a percentage of that. So that number is fairly easy to come up with. But then what goes into it is, it's an approximation of the time that'll be used for a plan check review and stuff like that, so...
Yeah, the valuation comes into place based on the actual usage of the monies that we would incur. So it's not just a number that we just spit out and say, oh, you want solar, here's an extra $1,400. There's a cost that's associated with that.
And you know what? Maybe instead of waiving the fees in its entirety, we just, we just pay the cost of staff time or whatever. But to that point, I mean, it may be an opportunity where we start receiving bills from the FIRE Department, honestly. And are those costs budgeted? I don't know. I don't have the magical solution here. I just, I know that, and the mayor's not... I just, I know that, that, and the mayor's not here to discuss it, but it's, it's been brought up now at both of our two by two meetings and, as was stated, they're not trying to say, "We don't deserve to be charged a fee." They just feel that the partnership that the city and, and the FIRE District have been working on needs to be fair on both sides.
So, I think some fees, like, like the solar panels, might deserve a look for a reduced or discounted fee. And I'm, I'm amped to say that possibly those that have to do with our safety within the city, so anything to do with police, fire or ambulance for any of their repairs, when we're talking about permit and inspection fees, I'd love to reduce that, to lower the burden on those who are providing safety to our citizens. And possibly another, you know, somehow calculate how much it is costing our people to go out. If it is costing our people $1,300 to go out and do the permit, then that's what it is. But I, I think a lower fee might be something that we can, we can consider. I'm not as much about the school district because I'm, I'm looking at permit and inspection fees. Are we talk, just talking about those or are we talking about like facility rental fees, those types of things as well?
No, not facility rental fees, more so like building inspe, well, but for school district, they really wouldn't, that's all DSA. They, the, the city building department wouldn't necessarily be involved in that. Jalen, can you think of any fees that we would charge the city for, or the school district for?
Nothing's coming to mind right now. You're right, I mean, especially through the building permit, you know, it's, it's done through the state. I'll give it some thought as you continue your, your conversations.
I have a question from Mr. Collins. Based off those examples we talked about, if you had to guess, number of hours when you do hydrant flushes and you're probably not involved in the fireworks booth inspections, but if you had to give a rough number of hours per calendar year?
So it's not that they actually do hydrant flushing. What they do is they go through and they, they will open up the hydrants to check to make sure that they're still working, replace little washers and gaskets like that. So they kind of do that as a time permitting. But yeah, it's hard to put a time on that because there's not a certain number we have them do do. But sure, I mean, there's multiple hours in there that's definitely saving public works for sure that we are not having to do.
Because otherwise, if they weren't working on those hydrants, it would turn into a maintenance program that public works would have to do.
Yes, it would.
Okay.
It sounds like you're implying that they may hold us hostage if we refuse to reduce or waive their fees. That sounds fairly hostile to me.
No, that, that, they're not being hostile at all.
Well, that's the implication that you're making, though, that if we could end up with all these fees, all of a sudden, if we don't play their game, that sounds like pay to play to me. And I'd be interested in hearing more about that conversation that you had, if that's the case.
I, if, if I was giving the impression that it was a pay to play, that's not what I was trying to represent. All I was trying to represent was they asked for fairness.
So my, my recommendation would be that if they have a request for a reduction or a waiver of fees, that they bring it to council. We, we support them in, in every way except for giving away free money, unless they can bring it to us and show just cause or, or, you know, reasonable action. I, I think that's totally fair and all of us would, would give them a listen and, and a fair shake. But again, just to blanket waive a bunch of fees, it sounds dangerous to me, especially in what sounds to me like a pay to play scenario.
Off the top of your head, do we know, you said the last two years, the only fee that we've really charged them was the, the solar?
That's my recollection. I don't want to, you know, be firmly on the record for that, but I don't recall another incident of that. And I imagine it would have been raised during our discussions, had there been another one. And I don't remember one from the school district.
Well, it's, it sounds to me like, and, and I totally respect and understand what Councilmember Engel's saving is, what, do we want to make this a blanket policy or do we want to evaluate it on a case by case basis? Because we also don't want it to just be a free for all either.
I would think in that two by two session, we, we could make that, you know, well known. Hey, if you have something, please bring it to us, we'll definitely listen.
Okay, so in that instance, and this is going off topic, but the $1,400, that's what triggered this? What is the, what is the legal avenue to consider a refund of that $1,400? Do you put, do the policy or do you do it on a case by case basis through the treasurer's report?
Refund is, is, in my mind, a different conversation. Procedurally, if we wanted to go down the path that's been outlined, we would recommend adopting the policy specifying that the user, the organization must appeal to the, the council first or request of the council first. And then that's just a procedural step within this policy. We'd make the same justification, we'd have largely the same policy, you would just add sort of this logistical step in it.
So could, Councilmember Engel, would you be agreeable to this? That says that the council must approve the, any reduction in fee prior to formal approval?
I mean, that's just what they have to do. Do we need to add an additional policy for something that they would just do anyway?
Well, yes.
They have the option to come to us anytime and, and ask for that, just like any other member of the public or any other business. So do we need to make some specific?
The only thing I would say, it's a little bit different because, like, for example, tonight, we had an item for a waiver for yoga class.
Yep.
That person had to bring that up to a council member too, and those council members had to request as a future agenda item for discussion. If you adopted a policy that basically says, these, these public agencies are allowed to make that request upon request to the city manager at a city council meeting, it saves, saves that kind of one step. Because it's not like they can come on, it has to get agendized.
Uh huh.
And they can't just show up in public comment and ask for it because the council wouldn't be able to take action for it under public comment. And technically, they don't have the right to get it on the agenda necessarily either. This way, it would remove that getting it on the agenda step.
So the policy?
And real quick, I'm sorry, so I'll add to that and, and jump in if I'm wrong. I think you certainly want to avoid the notion of being arbitrary. And so if, if they come in ad hoc and you approve one, but you don't approve another and it looks similar to one group, adopting a policy, you've now established why or how you evaluate that request that comes in. And while we didn't have a policy for the seniors, we certainly have past precedent of the seniors getting fees waived. And so it wasn't arbitrary. And, and so that's why I think we, I would recommend that we adopt some sort of policy so when they come in, people will know what you're evaluating it based on.
Hey, so essentially, it's just cutting out the, the formal agenda item request.
Yeah.
And establishing that you've, you've thought this out in advance and, you know, there's, there's something that you're basing your decision on.
And I think, yeah, and I think that what the city manager's getting at is, it's establishing a clear path for public agencies to these fees, but it doesn't open the net wider to other groups and other interests. It's a very narrow exception to the master fee schedule. And so then when other people can come up, it can also be used as a tool to say, well, we opted a policy, the policy, the rationale for the policy was the general health, well, health, welfare and safety of the general public at large. We felt like these agencies further that purpose. So that would be the stated reason. So it's, it's an agenda planning tool, but also it, it kind of keeps things in its lane and doesn't, doesn't turn into a slippery slope.
And to, to your earlier point, Councilmember Engel, I think what you were saying is, they're very, very valid concerns that you bring up. We don't want to make sure that it, we're just not giving these other government agencies a blank check. That, that's not the intent of this. I, I think it's more so have, and ultimately, yes, that decision rests with the council. And so I, I think that we adopt the policy because then that gives staff leverage to say, well, did you follow the policy?
Can somebody just kind of verbalize what the amended policy would look like?
I would just recommend, if that's where the council wants to go, to say, adopt the policy, but directing staff to add a, add language there that before, that it, that any request has to go through the city manager and approved by the city council at a council meeting. And that, and we could work on that language to smooth that out. We don't have to, we don't prescribe the exact verbiage, as long as we understand the concept.
That satisfies?
I could get on board with that.
That would satisfy your concern?
Yeah.
Ask whenever that there is a permit or inspection fee that's going to be applied, but just bring it to council and at that point, we would consider it.
It's adopting the policy and then following it back up with that request?
So you're saying automatically bring it to council? My recommendation would be make them request it.
There's almost never a time for them to, that they've brought it or that they are even getting assessed that we can even remember. So it's so rare.
And, and my point would be, it's so rare, it's easy for them to make the request when it comes up. Because the, the only reason why is it's, it's putting a more, I think that's, it's going to be more of an administrative burden on staff to, to.
Bring it.
To bring it. It's better if, the agencies that are affected, once they learn this policy, it'll be in their interest to, to, to remember that, that role.
The only thing that I don't like in this language, and this, there's no offense to you, City Manager, but I don't like that the city manager can suspend the waiver policy. I, I think for making true policy decisions, I believe that that policy suspending or cancel or modifying the policy needs to come at the discretion of the council.
Just add that into the motion and, and we will make that change with the other modification.
Councilmember Kay, you're being really quiet too. Have any thoughts?
I, really, I, I agree with both points, points of view. And, and I think that that is the best way for us to move forward is, you know, if they want a fee, fee waiver, they should request it from city manager, city manager can bring it, you know, to council and we can make a decision on each of those items. I don't think that we should give a, a blanket waiver. There may be, you know, a $20 million construction project that the, you know, the firehouse decides to do, you know, that would have massive fee implications and, and time invested in it. So I think that we just have the discretion to be able to look at those on a case by case basis. And especially with as far a view between as it is, like you stated, Frank, I think that them making that request at that time, that they're pulling that permit and then bringing it before council, I, I think that's the best way to move forward. So if we can amend the, you know, the motion to add that language, I, I do agree with, you know, instead of it being the discretion of city manager, basically shift that language where it's the discretion of city council.
We also include the ambulance district in this?
You basically determined all public safety, right? Is that kind of? That's not listed on there, but that was the way that.
Is, is, can you tell me about the, what is, what is it that you're proposing, the ambulance?
There's also if they need to do.
Are they a public agency?
Are they considered a public agency?
I don't believe so.
I don't know of any.
Because they're, they're for profit or they're nonprofit?
I, I, that I do not know.
I would, right now, I would just, I would just limit it to the two we've discussed.
Okay.
And we can always expand it to others, but I would just, give this a pilot program, so to speak, and if there's other agencies, but I would just focus on the school district and the fire protection district.
And those are specifically government agencies, so that, that makes sense where the ambulance is not.
And, and, and the way that this reads, and to your point, you know, you have a, the, the FIRE Department decides to replace the firehouse. And if we were to adopt this policy as is, we're waiving inspection times and, oh, well, there's a blanket, you're not going to charge us, well, the, the city's not going to eat all those inspection costs, so.
No, and that's an, an important source of revenue for the city as well.
Right. We just need to be, we all need to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars.
Right.
That's the point.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
Don't we need to put it out to audience first?
Oh, yeah.
Put it out to the audience if anybody has anything to contribute, anybody online? No? All right, bring it back to council. And would anybody like to entertain a motion?
I will make a motion to approve this item with the changes as discussed.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. And our next item here is consideration of professional service agreement with Autry Sweeping Service, Inc. for Escalon Sweeping Service for two years with an option to extend and not to exceed $94,000.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor Protem. So we do have a professional service contract with a contractor for street sweeping services. As you may recall, last year, late last year, Jillton, who had been providing the services for at least 12 years and, and maybe dating back further than that, notified the city that they would no longer, they said January, be providing those services. We have coordinated with them and they are continuing to provide those services until such time as we found a permanent solution. And so staff has gone back and forth on this and we've really explored three different options. Taking these services in-house, we do have a street sweeper, figuring out a way to staff that and, and man that. We also worked with another jurisdiction to see if there was some partnership where we could maybe use our street sweeper and maybe their staff and make a good partnership. And then the third, of course, is a contractor. We went back and forth. I, I thought at one point it was for sure going to be the partnership with the other jurisdiction. Unfortunately, they came and acquired their own street sweeper truck and so they did not need us as much. And it turned out to be not financially beneficial to us to partner with that city. So then it was really taking it in-house. And while I firmly believe there are many, many, many things that we could do in-house for cheaper than, you know, contractor rate, I also have to think about, you know, kind of what is corridor mission? Where should we be spending our staff resources and staff time? And after that analysis, we feel, and this is our recommendation, that, you know, going to the contractor is the best option right now for a reduction in liability, for issues pertaining to hiring part-time staff, managing part-time staff, keeping part-time staff on, covering vacations and sick time and, and all of that, as well as wear and tear on our street sweeper, which was not as big a deal, but just the, the overall workload on our staff, which is already underpersoned, understaffed and, and in some cases, overworked. And so our analysis, even though we're paying, you know, more each year than we were before, is to get into this two-year agreement. And like we do with all things, you know, at least in our management tenure here, is evaluate it as we go. There's, of course, out clauses with the contract. If we need to, to get out, we can, but we have a two-year window here with the option to increase. No increases to that $47,000 each year in the first two years. And then we would evaluate increases into any subsequent contract that we entered.
Do we, does Autry Sweeping Services, Inc. provide sweeping services for any other cities in the area?
They don't provide any for actual other cities. They do it for contractors and for construction companies more than anything, venturing out to grow into more cities. And so they just start inquiring and we were lucky enough to catch one of that and kind of jump on board.
How many proposals did we receive or did we only entertain Autry's?
We did reach out to ABC Street Sweeping. We did reach out to ABC Street Sweeping and we were in discussions with them for some period of time. And ultimately, they decided because of cost, the lack of number of units they have and staffing levels that they were not able to provide the service.
I was really looking forward to seeing Chief drive around in the street sweeper.
Don't get me wrong, guys would love to, but I don't want him behind the wheel all day long. I need him somewhere else.
Excuse me. I, I will say that I have prior experience with Autry's in my prior line of work. They are a great company. They've been around for a long time. And when I saw that that was, you know, who we, we had the proposal from, I had the same question as you, are, are they doing any other cities, you know, any of that sort of thing? But I have witnessed them on job sites running water trucks and, and doing sweeping, sweeping services plenty of times. And I can tell you, they definitely do a good job. So I, I think that this is a very good move for us.
Great. Any more comments up here?
Yeah.
All right.
And so are we, are we ironclad that that's satisfying the state's prevailing wage requirement? That we won't get backcharged at some point? I mean, I know there's a not to exceed and it looks like there's an escalator, it's called an annual inflator here, but for the $47,000, are, are we sure that that satisfies the requirements?
Yeah. It's, the, the, the contract includes prevailing wage. I mean, that's all I can tell you. Includes that cost. And, and just as a general comment, prevailing wage is something that the contractor typically is going to be in the, to have the spear on in terms of exposure to DIR, not the city. So if they shirk that responsibility, they will be held accountable by DIR, not the city.
Do we have any more questions or comments up here? All right. Out to the audience. Is there anybody in the audience that has any, anything to say on this issue? Anybody online? All right. Bring it back to council. Does anybody ready to entertain a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve the contract with Autry's Street Sweeping Service.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hey, great. And we move on to council communications. Counselor Engel. Start that way.
Sure. In an attempt to get the closed session, I'll speak very quickly and say I have nothing to say.
Perfect. Counselor Strowman?
I'll make mine brief as well. There has been some, I don't know if you guys have been following, but our, our sister city to the east is, Oakdale is in discussions about issuing a feasibility study to see if they can move to, off of PG&E to MID. And so that triggered a conversation with myself and councilmember K and, which led to a meeting held earlier today with myself, councilmember K, city manager, as well as some representatives from SSJID with, it was a very, very good fruitful conversation with more information in the coming months to be presented to council. Other than that, I hope everybody's having a great summer vacation. So Linda, keep up the phenomenal work with budget and finance. Really appreciate what you're doing. Chief, I really like your proactive approach for the department and can't forget our friends at Public Works. So stat, citywide, I think it's, it's really clicking and people are noticing. So thanks to everybody for all of your hard work. That's it.
Counselor K?
You know, it's a long night, so I might as well be the most long-winded one that I'm ever going to have. A couple of weeks ago, we, we had to cancel our meeting. Didn't give me the opportunity to congratulate all of our local graduates and fifth graders that are promoting to the middle school and our middle schoolers that are promoting to the high school. So I did want to congratulate all of them, even if it is a couple of weeks late here. Our PTOs in every one of our schools are such an important part of our child's development and, and their involvement is just absolutely amazing. And I got, I got to witness some of that firsthand. Chaperoning the eighth grade dance at, at El Portel and the El Portel Parent Teacher Club, it was just absolutely amazing, the dance that they put on over there. Not one time in my entire childhood, high school, anything did I ever go to a dance that looked anything like what, what those phenomenal parents had put on over there for those students. So I just, I had to say something and, and give them some kudos for what an amazing job they did for our kids. As Councilman Strowman stated, you know, we had that meeting today, that is something that I have been investigating and looking at for a very long time, several months. And he was able to make some very quick inroads and, and get a meeting put together for us in just a couple of short weeks. And I, I can't thank him enough for getting involved in that and, and helping me out with something that, you know, it's major and something that I've been wanting to work on for a long time. It was a, a great meeting. We, we covered a lot of ground, but a lot of really good information. And I'm, I'm very, very excited for our not-so-far-off future. I had a question for our city manager. Is there a, a contract or policy in place with the railroad with any kind of limitations into how long they can clog up our train tracks and our, our thoroughfares?
Certainly don't have a contract with them. You know, I'm trying to now rack my brain if there's any sort of, you know, F A, FRA regulation or something. But I think their request is, or the, the suggestion, question is, when they are operating and they tie up an intersection.
How long can they split our town in half? On that.
Something we can look into. I don't, I don't know.
There is a timeframe.
Yeah.
And there's a number at the tracks when, that you can call when, when it goes over that time limit.
The, and, and the reason that I bring this up is that it was brought, brought my attention that someone's child had a, had a seizure. And of course, it happened when a train was stopped cutting our town in, in half. And this poor parent was stuck giving her child CPR for 15, 20 minutes, waiting for a train to clear so an ambulance could get to their child. That is absolutely unacceptable. I, I do not see how we continue to allow that to happen without some kind of change happening here. I know that, you know, the railroad tracks were here and the town was built around, around the railroad tracks and that's always been the excuse for why we just have to deal with it. But I don't think that that's something that we do actually have to deal with. I think that there's probably, you know, some avenues that we may have to maybe request the railroad themselves to put in an under or overpass, make sure that they aren't stopping our, our crossings, you know, where they're clogging up our town and stopping the ability to transfer back and forth from one side to the other. So I, I would like to get council's consensus to be able to investigate this a little bit and, and see where, where we can go with this and what we can do. This problem is only going to continue to be exasperated. I can only imagine, I work out at home and have, all of a sudden have a heart attack out of nowhere and an ambulance can't get to me because of, of a train. And my family gets to sit there and watch me die because we can't get emergency services, you know, across our town. You know, obviously a morbid example, but you know, that's, that's the concern here. And at some point, this is going to cost someone's life and I don't think that we can put a dollar amount on that. I think that it's time for us to investigate something. So is there any other council member that would be willing to back me on investigating this and looking into this?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'd support it too, but it looks like California passed a law, but the Federal Railroad Association over, overruled, saying that you can't, there's no determined amount of time that they, and that's the federal level.
So at the federal.
State says 10 minutes. Fed says, no, you can't do that.
But could we, I don't know if, we can't really get into discussion, but legally, could we pass an ordinance or a policy that they would have to adhere to?
Probably not. But let's look, we'll look into it. Taylor and I will look into it. And Jeremy already knows more about railroad crossing law than I do, so.
I was held up and went for an hour and called nonstop to try and figure out how to get passed because I was.
Yeah. I, I just know from my experience with other cities that have this issue, the issue they have is not so much the crossing time, because the crossing time is the crossing time. It's the fact that the train, in the other jurisdiction, I think it's Union Pacific, they're just completely off on those windows. And so at least if you could get them to stick to their windows, now you can't plan when there's an emergency incident, but you can at least have some, because if they shut the gates and they're, it's shut for 10 minutes and then the train goes crosses, that adds to the time and it's frustrating.
I, I don't know if you're familiar with, with what happens here, but they, they actually stop all of our, all of our traffic, dead stop. 120, McHenry. What's the Jones? So all three of our, our crossings will have a train stopped while another one goes by.
So it's literally the half town is divided.
Yeah.
But for 30 minutes.
We'll take a look, we'll take a look at it and see, this may be one of those things where it may be difficult, but we'll absolutely take a, a good, hard look at it and see if there's any options or if there's any workarounds.
And, you know, I'm well, well aware that, you know, this is a, a big mountain to climb, but.
Yeah.
I like, I like challenges, I guess, so let's see if we can find one.
That being said, you know, I would like to remind the public that as councilmember Engel pointed out, every crossing has a blue sign. And you call that number, but in the meantime, call the police department and they'll do what they can do as well, especially if the gates are down and there's no train.
So you're saying make a chief's problem?
Yeah.
This has been a issue for a long time. They.
We, we probably can't get any more substantive discussion just because we've already had a lot, this is really just to, to tee up that we want to have the discussion.
Yeah.
Sorry. And I was part of the, I realize I was part of the problem.
Sorry, chief.
My fault.
The attorney himself was breaking the rules.
Yeah.
But I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Quite, quite an issue and it's been an issue for an eternity. So that's it. I'll quit talking now.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everybody, and bearing with me while I chair the meeting. So that was fun, fun experience. So thank you very much. Very excited for our new contribution to our planning commission. I think Roxanna is going to bring a great insight to planning. And then also our very brand-new economic development committee that has been established tonight. I am excited for the opportunity to hear what they have to say and what they can do. I think it was very telling when the question was asked, what kind of policies, economic policies in town have worked well? And neither of our, our people could come up with an answer with what, they could come up with what doesn't work well, but not with any policies that have worked well. And in Escolon, we've kind of been known to, or some people know us of having some restrictive business policies and possibly some expensive policies. I'm hoping that this committee can help resolve some of these issues or that they can be addressed so that we can go forward with our economic policies and start having more business done in Escolon and bringing more to downtown and more to our town and get people to stop and get that tax base up. So great meeting tonight and that is the only point I'm going to make, except enjoy Escolon and the summer and all of the, will I see you before 4th of July? No, have a wonderful 4th of July.
Farmer's market.
Oh, and farmer, enjoy your farmer's market. So with that, we will retire to closed session for a conference with labor negotiations. Just FYI, we paid $437,000 for electricity.
Just FYI, we paid $437,000 for electricity.